Evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 4, 2024 Board of Selectmen meeting, I'm sorry, Select Board meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. So we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Heather, will you lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as far off.
Do we have anybody for citizens input?
Yeah.
Come on up. Right there. Or here.
Does it matter?
No.
Yes, fine.
Okay.
Since there's a committee coming to Fortyville this evening looking for appointments, I wanted to share my experience with applying for this committee and that I felt that I was treated unfairly by them. Last week, I applied for the open seat on the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee. I first would like to recognize the important work done by this committee, especially Bob Correa and all of the hard work he has put into this committee. After the Select Board decided to not reappoint Mr. Correa at the last meeting, and there was a lengthy discussion about not wanting to appoint non-residents, I decided to apply for the open seat on the committee since I believed it's important to have this position filled as it's an extremely important committee. Just so you all have my background, which was on my application, I just graduated from Worcester State this spring, where I served as a resident assistant, resident director, and orientation leader. Through those jobs, I received a lot of training and had to handle situations surrounding sexual violence that I felt would make me a strong candidate to serve on this committee. I was a mandatory reporter on campus and was trained on consent, resources, Title IX, and bystander intervention. I worked closely with the Campus Sexual Abuse and Violence Education Team, and for two years, I was a member of Worcester State's chapter of It's On Us, which is a national organization which aims to prevent sexual assault on college campuses. I helped run many programs that educated and gave resources to students, and I volunteered at events such as the Red Flag Campaign and the Clothesline Project. I was also featured in Worcester State's We Speak Up Bystander Intervention video the past two years. I will also be continuing this work post-graduation as I have accepted a position working in higher education student affairs. I wanted to be able to bring this experience back to Foxborough, and I believed that I would bring a young and fresh perspective to this committee. All of this was on my application, and that committee decided to not interview me before deciding who they were going to appoint. I know the interview was not guaranteed as it's at the discretion of that committee, but I believe based on my resume and the fact that I was the only Foxborough resident to apply, I deserved the courtesy of at least having a conversation and meeting with me before they made up their mind on who they were going to appoint. While I've been invited to get involved and attend meetings, there are no associate positions for this committee, and since only one member is at large, there will not be an opportunity for me to be a member of this committee for at least three more years. I would like to add that while some members of the community have expressed that they feel it's odd that I've decided to apply to this committee because I have not been involved with them in the past, while I haven't been active with that specific group, I have been very involved in the Foxborough community. I'm a Foxborough High School graduate, where I was a member of three honor societies, six clubs, and played sports. I volunteered for the Foxborough Recreation Department from sixth grade until college and served on their Friends of Foxborough Recreation Board for a year. I also was a counselor at the Booth Summer Program for five years and have substitute taught for the Foxborough Public Schools for the past four years and worked in the preschool summer program at the Barlow Elementary School. Since the Select Board oversees this committee, I felt that it was important for me to share this information with you so you are aware of how this committee is treating a young resident who wants to be involved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there anybody else for citizens input? Okay. If this time, I'm gonna read a letter that was sent to the Board of Selectmen by a resident that could not be here tonight, and he asked that we would just read it into the record. So I'm gonna do that as citizens input. Okay, it was sent to Foxborough Town Hall. Good morning, Foxborough Select Board. Unfortunately, I am unable to attend the Select Board meeting on Tuesday, June 4, due to a scheduling conflict. I noticed there was a thank you on the agenda for Renee Toshi. I wanted to reach out and express my personal thanks to Renee for the work she has done for the town Recreation Department over the last eight years, and especially running the department as the only year, I'm sorry, as the only year-round staff member over the last few years. The number of programs that the department now offers and the continued new and/or improved events and opportunities for the youth in this town is a testimony to the work that Renee did to continue the inclusive nature of the Big Backyard Marketing and Plan and Logo introduced back in 2019. Renee's departure was avoidable and is disappointing, to say the least. I wish that your board took action on the recent complaints about a few members of the Recreation Board and did a better job of supporting the department. These complaints were brought to the board's attention starting on March 1. Since that timeframe, no action was taken to support Renee. In fact, a complaint was made against Renee by a couple of members of the Recreation Board because why not blame the victim? I am not a strong believer that one of the primary elements and roles for volunteer boards on the town level is to support the managers and employees that are in place within the individual departments when you have strong leaders. Several members of the Recreation Board failed to do this, violated board handbook policies, put their own personal and political opinions regarding the retired high school indigenous character ahead of the department and their options, and for that matter, the town and in turn led to the departure of the Recreation Director. I trust that Ma Craig has a strong plan in place for the future of the department. But before the future director is hired, I hope that the complaints regarding certain Recreation Board members are addressed and changes are made to the board to help support the position, not to set them up for failure from the start. Although too late for Renee, I do hope that your board considers the above lack of support when working with town manager Paige Duncan. I understand some board members may not have liked the hiring process of the town manager, which was flawed from the start, but the decision was made, and this process has nothing to do with Paige. The town manager has now been in her position for close to a year when you factor in the interim timeframe, which she stepped up to assist the town with last year. I have yet to hear anything but positive feedback about Paige outside of the Select Board's hiring process, which she was incorrectly blamed for in part. Recently, her request for assistance to create a new position within the town administrative team, which would not cost the taxpayers any additional funding, was put on the back burner for no specific reason after initially being approved by the previous Select Board. I don't understand why your board would not support this request when the town manager's goal remains long-term strategic planning and growth for Foxborough. With the World Cup planning for 2026 continuing to be a major element of this position, in addition to everything else this role encompasses, a request for assistance and backup as needed makes sense for the town and will only help in her role leading the town forward. Please consider this when the request comes back up. Thank you in advance for your consideration and the work that you do for the town. Randall Lyons, 59 Carolav. Okay, let's see. Okay. Next, we have the Select Board to thank Bianca, Emma, and Cam from Mr. Ivett's shop class at Foxborough High School, who produced the new signs that you see right here for our town conservation properties. So at this time, I'd like to welcome them to come up. Yeah, absolutely. First of all, I want to say that they're beautiful and what a great job. Can Mr. Ivett, how about you start and tell us like what led to these being made?
Sure. Well, I believe, I'm pretty sure that it started out with a discussion on Foxborough Discussion, and then Carl Fuller, who's a part of, obviously, the Foxborough community, had mentioned that at Foxborough High School, this is something that we could probably, you know, manage to take on. And then I was tagged in the post. And then, you know, shortly thereafter, I think it was like 10, 15 minutes after the, I was tagged, I got a phone call from Chris Gallagher, who kind of ran the operation and took it under his wing and asked if we'd be interested in maybe doing it. And I asked the students, it's a smaller class because a lot of the seniors are gone now, so it was a good opportunity for them to kind of learn the CNC machine, and they jumped all over it. They wanted to help out, so.
Great. And so can we, we start down this end, we say your name, and you want to just tell us quickly how you felt about being part of this?
Well, my name's Bianca Cass, and it was like when Mr. Ivett asked me and Emma and Cam, I was so excited. It was just something enjoyable to be a part of, and like the whole experience was fun because we, like, we're an intro, so it's, we haven't like had the opportunity to use it, like the CNC machine, so it was like exciting to use it. So I like loved being a part of it, and then being able to like post it on Facebook, like the Foxborough Discussion on Facebook, like showing that we made it, and then everyone being like so thankful that we made it, like made us all happy, like to be a part and do something for the town.
Fabulous. How about you, sweetheart?
Emma Sweden, and like everything she said, it was a lot of fun to make. Like, usually we have like other projects to do in class, and it was just like really fun to like be able to do something together and like do something for the town, too. It was, it was nice.
I'm Cameron Lightbody, and I agree with all that it said and stuff. I was happy to do this, and the sign was actually on my street, so I heard about the post. So it was pretty funny being able to do it in my own class and school.
The fun part about it, too, is I think every day Bianca would come in and talk about how we were blowing up on Facebook. We're up to 500 likes. It was a, it was a lot of fun for us to do it, so. And a good learning opportunity for these. We just got the CNC machine up and running in December. I know Bill Yucan had a big, big role in kind of getting not only the CNC machine, but a lot of the equipment in the, in our shop up to date. It was, it was due. It was, you know, stuff that kind of came in with the building when it was built in 1972, so. Our woodshop classes have kind of also blown up. The popularity of the class has grown quite a bit, so. And these guys did a really good job of kind of jumping all over it and learning and kind of, you know, getting their hands dirty and moving lumber around and big four-by-fours that were pressure-treated, so they had a little bit of weight to them. But they were, they were ready for the task and jumped in headfirst. It was great.
So are they all complete now? Is the sign itself 100%?
What's that?
Is this sign 100% done?
So this sign, obviously, it's 100% done from our standpoint. What we did was the carving, the sanding, and a lot of the sanding, and then obviously the pre-drilled holes on the end. Now, I believe the, and Chris can kind of probably talk after that, but the DPW will take it from here and kind of install them, I believe on Lakeview, right? That's where, yeah, so Lakeview Road, which is great, so.
Anybody else?
When I was in high school, Foxborough High School, we couldn't take shop. We could only learn to cook. And it was awful. It was awful cooking, and it was an awful lesson. Congratulations to all of you. I think it's an awesome thing. Mr. Ivett's being a hometown boy gives back. He's bringing you all with him.
Yeah. It's good to have, like I said, we use the land quite a bit, my family and I, and I know we're always out there. We live, you know, right across from the Lane property, so it was, it was really, it was a good, it was a treat for me. And then obviously, you know, being able to double down and kind of show them the ins and outs of the CNC machine and other machinery in the, in the shop and get away from their little projects was, was a lot of fun, so.
Doc, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, my ignorance. What's a CNC machine?
So CNC machine, it's, it's a router that's basically set up on like an axle. So it has, it's, it's all computerized. So it's not like, you know, the students are in there chiseling away hour after hour. It's something that you just plug in. Cameron did a lot of the computer work where he, we tried to match up the font as best we could with what we had from Chris's drawing. And it was kind of neat because we got to see the drawing and then obviously, you know, or see the plan and then actually produce what was on the drawing. So it was all kind of, kind of came full circle. It was fun. But the CNC machine, it's a computerized numeric, I forget what the last C is, control, right, exactly. Thank you. So yeah, it's, it's all computerized, and it's a router that just basically goes down, and you just have to move. We had to do some tilling where we would do part of the sign at first because the CNC machine is only, you know, three feet in height. So we had to do part of the sign, move it, and then we completed the rest of the sign with the second, with the second carving, so. But it's something that's all saved now, and I know, I'm sure either these guys or maybe some other students in the future would definitely be willing to kind of jump in and help out. If there's ever anything else similar to this, we could, we could definitely help out. It was a ton of fun, so.
Make note of that, Chris.
Yeah.
Already done.
Already have.
I think one of the prime things about this is showing real-life application.
Right, exactly, yeah.
You can teach, you can learn a lot of stuff, and you always kind of sit there and question, when are we gonna use this? Well, now you know, so that's great.
Well, the computer skills, too.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Dennis, did you have anything you want to add? I'm sorry, for half a second, I forgot you were up there. You don't have, you're on mute, Dennis.
Here I am.
There you are.
I was just gonna remind you that I was here. No, I think it's outstanding to see the students step up. I know this became a big issue. Very quickly, they stepped up, and now it's resolved, so great job, everyone.
All right, so I guess I have two quick comments. Number one, Billy, thank you so much. My children had you for gym class, not for, and, you know, you're a fabulous addition to Foxborough High School.
Thank you.
You know, proud. I know my kids loved you. I can see how much fun these kids are having with you, so thank you to get this. And the other thing I want to add to Bianca, Emma, and Cameron is that this is just the beginning, that, you know, that you guys have created something for your community, and, you know, you'll be able to see it and have pride in that. And there's nothing better than stepping up for your community and being part of something for your community, so I hope you guys continue. This is wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we just have a quick picture with the kids, everyone in front?
You guys standing in front?
You guys getting in front, too?
Okay.
Two seconds.
Yes, you are. Come on. This is what we like to do.
We're gonna pull them off in front of us, or?
We're gonna tell Katie how she wants it. Yeah, just get it like in the middle. Maybe because you guys hold the sign or something?
Done this before.
All right, let's get in together like we like each other. Thanks, guys.
Do they leave them up here, or do they go with you guys?
Thank you. You guys bring it back, or just leave them on the table here?
Bye. Thanks for coming. Okay, so up next, we're gonna, we're gonna stick with a student from Foxborough High School. So we have Lucas Lane that's gonna come up and give us, give us a small presentation. Wherever, wherever you're comfortable, Lucas, is good with us.
So I'm Lucas Lane. I'm a junior at Foxborough High School. And just some background on this project we're doing. So in my AP English Language and Composition class, towards the end of the year, we have a proposal project where we essentially have some policy change where we want to enact in our community.
Can you, they need you to step a little closer.
Bring the mic closer to you.
Yeah, so we have a proposal project in this class where towards the end of the year, we have to implement or propose some policy change somewhere in our community, whether it be on the town level, the school level, or anywhere else there. So.
When you want to change, you have the.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and so my proposal is gonna be to implement ranked choice voting.
You have to, the crazy thing is you have to point it back there. Doesn't make any sense, but that's where the computer is.
Okay, so the current situation with voting is, so dating back to the American Revolution, the United States has always been a nation of democracy and freedom, and perhaps the most critical foundation of this freedom is voting rights. So while initially limited to a few citizens, voting rights has since to the modern day expanded to nearly all citizens that are adults. But just because everybody has the right to vote doesn't mean that the voting systems we use are inherently equal or fair in terms of electing candidates to government positions. So the biggest problem, I believe, that causes this is the existence of plurality voting, which is essentially a system in which it's only the candidate with the most number of votes overall wins the election, regardless of whether they receive 50% of the votes, which would be a majority of votes. And I think that this leads to a problem with not every citizen being represented fairly or not every citizen being truly represented or feeling that their government provides them with a level of support that they would like to receive, especially because the fact that a candidate that doesn't actually win an election is able to be elected to a position happens, I don't think is something that we should be supporting as a democratic institution. And so this is my proposal to how we can solve that issue. So that would be through ranked choice voting. And I'm going to briefly describe what ranked choice voting is and how it works. So similar to plurality voting and ranked choice voting, you're given a ballot where you can, where you have a selection of candidates running for a position, and each candidate is placed on that ballot. But rather than just choosing one or two candidates, if it's a single winner or a multi-winner election, you would rank these candidates in order of your preference. So you could do your first preference candidate and then fill out the rest of the list. You don't have to fill out the entire list, but the more you fill out, the more preference you're giving and the more specifics about how much you support these candidates is going to be shown. So the first-choice votes are counted first, and the way it works is the candidate with the least number of first-choice votes is then eliminated from the pool of candidates. So essentially, what ranked choice voting does is that it attempts to receive a 50% majority for any candidate. And if no candidates receive a 50% majority, it does this system to ensure that it keeps going until one candidate does. So what happens is that that candidate that was eliminated, their votes go to their second choice instead. So they use all the ballots from the first-choice candidate, and then they transfer it to the second choice. And this process is repeated until at least one candidate achieves a 50% majority of votes. I do recognize, oh wait, the PowerPoint wasn't updated, so I'll explain one thing. I do recognize that in certain elections of the town, there are actually multiple winners. So the Select Board and the school committee often have, you can vote for two candidates instead. And there is a way that ranked choice voting actually can address this, and that's through a slightly different system called proportional ranked choice voting. And the way this system's work, the way that this system works instead is that you still rank the candidates by your preference the same way you would with a single vote or a single winner ballot. But instead of just eliminating the lowest number of votes, it would actually change the required percentage of the votes to win overall. So because two candidates can be elected in certain elections that we have here, the threshold for that vote would actually be 33.3%, or just one-third of votes. And that's because only two candidates in a ranked choice voting system would be able to receive a third of the votes overall. And so what would happen is that if one candidate were to achieve more than this threshold of the votes, their votes that are over, that are, there are excess votes, which means any percentage of the vote they have higher than this percentage would instead be transferred to their second choice. So say that one candidate received about 40% of the vote in the election. The way that this would instead happen is that the percentage of votes that are above the threshold, so around 7%, 7% to 8% of those votes, would instead be transferred. And the way this would work to ensure that their preference is truly ranked is that it uses what's called a fractional system. So what this means is that the percentage of the votes that are above the threshold, that percent is counted towards each of the next votes in their order. And so let's say that a vote, that one candidate had 100 votes above the threshold, and they made, and they made 40% of the total votes. That means that 7% of that 100 threshold, so about, so about seven to eight votes of that candidate, because it's, that's the percentage, would then be given to each of the second, to each of the next candidate. So that would mean that the second, let's say the second choice vote, or the, or for all the candidates, for all that, for all first-choice votes, for the least, or for the candidate that is above, their votes would then be, 7% of the second-choice votes, if they were 7% above the threshold, would go. And then this would be proportional with the rest of the percentage, for the rest of the choices, just depending on the choices that are being made for that candidate. And it's slightly different than the, than the single winner candidate, but it would be, but it would be easy to apply. Either the, this system showed on the screen for elections that only have one winner, and then the proportional system for elections that can have multiple winners. So, oh wait, let me go back. So in 2020, there was actually a Massachusetts ballot initiative that would implement ranked choice voting on a statewide level, but this unfortunately failed by a small margin. And on the map, the orange, the towns highlighted in orange are the ones that voted no. And Foxborough was one of the towns that voted no to this initiative. But the reason that my proposals, that my proposal is different is because it would only apply to town-level elections, which I believe are less influenced by partisan, bipartisan decisions and by more polarizing initiatives. And it's really attempting to focus on just the town-level issues instead. So I believe that even if the town overall voted not to vote on a statewide initiative, it still has its applications and the effects that I'm gonna go into for town-level issues. So why should we implement ranked choice voting? My first reason is voter empowerment. My second reason is candidate diversity. And my third reason is political involvement, and I'm gonna go into, go in depth in each of these. So starting with voter empowerment, I think an important thing that comes with this is the importance of the youth vote. Because the youth, and by youth, I mean just young voters, not under the age of 18, but generally around, from 18 to 30 or 35 is what I would consider the youth vote. So youth voters are the future of our nation, and these are, these are the people that are gonna be inheriting the political systems and the government systems that we now, that our society now is part of. And youth voters in general have a very low voter turnout, and they generally tend to not be very involved in political systems. But I do believe that the youth vote could be possibly in fact, possibly, be positively affected by ranked choice voting. So in a nationwide UMass Amherst poll, it was actually found that 83% of voters under the age of 30 were supportive of ranked choice voting. And I believe that ranked choice voting would be a great way to really have these youth voters feel impacted and feel that they're having a say in this because it really allows them to feel that they're having, that they have a greater connection to the political system. Because when you feel more represented and the candidates that you support are, have a better chance at being elected, regardless of their political party or just the ideology they have, it's going to make you feel more connected to the system and feel that you're having a greater impact on that. And then some additional impacts that tie into empowerment is trust in government and minority representation. So in a Boston Globe article that I researched, they found that the majority of Americans overall just don't have a lot of trust for their government or don't feel that their government is adequately providing for their needs in general. So ranked choice voting, I believe, would be very beneficial for trusting government because, again, when the candidates, or when you're voting for a candidate and you feel that your choices are being more adequately understood by having that preference rather than just having a single vote or two votes just to elect those candidates, it's going to have an overall selection of government officials that are gonna be more sympathetic to the needs of the people and understanding of the people and just allowing the people to feel more connected to their government. And then when it comes time to minority representation, that same Boston Globe article actually compared municipalities that use ranked choice voting to those that use plurality voting. And it found that minority populations were much better represented in the towns and cities that use ranked choice voting compared to the ones that didn't. And although the town of Foxborough isn't a remarkably, isn't a remarkably diverse town, it still has the impact to have that minority representation that we could be achieving. So going on to my second reason is candidate diversity. So the biggest problem with the plurality, with the plurality voting system is the spoiler effect, which is essentially when a voter would not choose their most preferred candidate but would instead vote what's called strategically because they don't want their most disliked candidate to be elected to office. And this has a, this has a pretty harmful effect on the overall ideological specter. And this has a, this has a pretty harmful effect on the overall ideological spectrum of candidates, because rather than voters having the candidates that would most support their policies and most represent them, they're voting for either more established candidates or more well-known people just to stop a different political figure from being elected. So ranked choice voting fixes this, because there isn't any fear that your vote is going to be wasted, and there isn't any fear that your vote could have a, what you perceive to be a harmful impact on government overall by throwing the, by throwing the election to somebody else, and it allows more candidates from a diverse spectrum of ideologies to be elected to office or just to even have that representation that is so badly needed. And then it also provides candidates and just political figures with more incentive to run. So some issues with plurality voting is that, first of all, just running an election and a campaign in general, it takes a lot of money, it takes a lot of time and energy to do so. So if a candidate from a certain ideology that isn't very well-supported or they know isn't going to have the same level of recognition as others, they're going to be de-incentivized to run, and that only furthers the negative feedback loop of not having the votes to run, and then because they see that, they're not going to run, and overall, there's less diversity and less variance within candidacies. And this contributes to a gap between established candidates and newcomers, because people who have established political backgrounds or just those that have more experience in government overall, just like a greater background with it, are going to be more likely to be elected to office, because they either have the support systems that enable them to run for office, or they have more experience with elections in the political system, and it stops people with newer ideas and newer forms of representative, or just newer, newer ideas that could be supported by different types of people from running for election. And ranked choice voting would really have an emphasis on the importance of policy and only policy, rather than the personality of the candidate or the character, because you can specifically vote based on the, based on the preference you have for these candidates, rather than trying to vote for somebody you think is going to win, which is important in having that diversity. So my final reason why we should implement ranked choice voting for 10 elections is political involvement and political activism. So I think the best way, or the best metric to measure political involvement is through voter turnout. And in ranked choice municipalities, there was actually a study done by Fair Vote, which is an activist organization. In a study they conducted, they found that ranked choice municipal, ranked choice voting municipalities on average had a much higher voter turnout than those that didn't. And that's really important, because in a town like Foxborough, especially when it comes to town elections, there generally isn't a very high voter turnout, or at least as high as the town would like it to be. So by using this data from studies done, we can predict that voter turnout would actually increase were we to implement this system. And this is especially true for young voters, because there was a research study conducted by university professors Courtney Julich and Joseph Cole, and they specifically measured the vote of, of voters under the age of 35, so from 18 to 35. And their study found that, on average, municipalities that use plurality voting had an average voter turnout of 77%, but this raised to 85% in those that use ranked choice voting. So it's clear that there is a correlation between ranked choice voting and increased voter turnout, which is really important. And this ties into better representation, because when more voters are being heard and more types of voters, whether it's due to age, due to ethnicity, gender, or other metrics, there's just better representation and a better variance of ideology and representation that's being seen. So, and this especially applies to local elections, because just in my own personal experience, there isn't much interest really in local elections. So there has, the one really big thing that's been going around in town is the logo for the public school district, but other than that, there isn't really much talk about elections, like when it comes to the school board, or sorry, select board or school committee. And even my own parents, they didn't even vote in the election, because they didn't know much about the candidates, and they didn't just have much interest overall. So I think that ranked choice voting would be a really good solution to this, because, like I, like I said earlier, Fair Vote, the activist organization, I had, I held an email interview with them where I asked certain questions about how ranked choice voting could impact local, local elections in municipalities, and they stated that it really allows more candidates, or more voters to be informed and just in general, more activism, because when you believe that your candidate has a chance of winning, or that there's just more ideology that really resonates with the voters, that level of being informed and interest is vital to having a stronger and more active political community in the town that you're part of. So my last point I'm going to be making is about why we should really be using ranked choice voting, more from the perspective of the takeaway that we can have through this system. So in almost the entire nation, whether it be federal elections, state elections, or town elections, plurality voting is being used, and it just generally contributes to a lack of representation and a lack of really enthusiasm, enthusiasm and involvement in elections that we could be having. But it really isn't that difficult to transition to ranked choice voting. So as an example, two states and 45 municipalities already use ranked choice voting, and within Massachusetts, that includes the cities and towns of Cambridge, East Hampton, and Amherst. So by implementing ranked choice voting, we would really have this almost revolutionary idea of having a new voting system and a new way to go about interacting with politics and with government that allows citizens to be more involved in their community and really have people feel that they're making an impact on their town in ways that we just haven't seen before. So with that, I'm going to be on to questions, and there's also my work scattered here, but yeah, I'd love to hear any questions that people have from that.
Well, that was an awful lot to take in.
Yeah.
I, I wish there was, I probably have a thousand questions. Unfortunately, we don't have that type of time tonight, but does anybody have something right, right off the top of their head that they?
No, I think, I think it was a great, a great presentation. I think, obviously, I see no, no cards or anything, so for you to be able to do your dictation off of what your sources were and everything, it's, it's very good. This obviously has been something that's been talked about in the past, and personally, I'd be more interested in seeing the electoral college go away, but I would definitely consider something like this.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Great job. No, no cards. I'm, I'm thoroughly impressed.
Thank you.
You're a very impressive young man. Are you in high school?
Yeah, I'm a junior in high school.
Excuse me, you might have said that.
Yeah.
You're going to go into your senior year?
Yeah, I'm going into my senior year.
And where is the beginning and end of this project? You make a presentation and?
Yeah, so the project itself, the project itself, we started around like March or April, and it started with just coming up with ideas and having a paper that we wrote about it. And the final project, and the final ultimate goal of the project is just to have it being presented. It isn't necessarily to have it passed, but it's just having that presentation and really just presenting your idea to somebody in your community where you just have the attempt to have the change in policy is really what the goal of the project is.
You did that, congratulations.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Paul, you have a question?
Thank you. We'll let me talk.
Oh, you got to come up though, Paul. We all know we can hear you.
Great presentation.
Yeah.
Paul Duma, 4 Adam Street, past Commander Lawrence W. Foster, post 93 American Legion. This young man on Memorial Day last week came to Rock Hill to play taps at Jack Arthur Letzgrave, to St. Mary's, to play taps at Vincent Galvin's grave, and to the East Foxborough Memorial, he played taps there early in the morning, and so he's more than just an intellect, he's a patriot. Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Dennis, you up there? Do you have, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think he did a, a great job with a very complex subject. He didn't stumble over any words, he had no notes, you know? I think he should go into politics. I worked in Cambridge for 12 years, so I'm not surprised they, they would, they would adopt this in our community, so.
Kind of wish I had this tutorial before the ballot question. I understood it a lot more now than I did trying to read about it during the ballot.
I guess in my mind, I'm thinking, if, if it was choice voting, would any of us be sitting here? Who knows? Something to consider, for sure.
Definitely.
Oh, thank you very much. It was a great presentation.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Thank you.
Very smart kid, huh? All right, where are we? Okay, so they knew they were coming up, DPW, Chris Gallagher. Okay, Mr. Gallagher, you are up.
All right, good evening. I'm going to keep this, my part, real short at this moment. My name is Chris Gallagher, I'm the Director of Public Works. This is our annual update to the board as far as what the DPW has been up to and what we have going on in the future. At the same time, the last few years, we've been bringing in National Grid and some of their representatives to give a little perspective on what they've been working on and as far as the power grid goes. So I have Bob Moran and Ted Lombardi with me. I'm going to let them talk about the, the infrastructure in Foxborough, what they've been working on. I will say I've seen a lot of it firsthand with the substation across the street from the DPW office on Elm Street, currently with all the tree trimming going on around town too. So there is definitely work going on from National Grid's perspective, and I'll let them give some, some of the details as far as what they've been working on.
Sure, thank you, Chris. And for the record, I'm Robert Moran, I'm a community manager with National Grid, and thank you Chair McGowan and members of the board, and Paige and Kate. So my role is primary interaction with town hall, fire and police, and DPW. I also run the municipal room during storms, when we're in outage response mode. With me is Ted Lombardi, who is a principal engineer with our distribution planning and asset management group, and he's got some specifics about what we've done in Foxborough recently.
Good evening. So just want to go over some work that we've, we've done the past 10 years and what we have coming up. So four new, new or upgraded substations in Foxborough. Our Foxborough Number One, across the street from the stadium, feeds North, North Foxborough and, not the stadium directly, but the, all the stores associated to it. Foxborough Number One on the Ponset Ave, 2017, completely rebuilt, increased capacity. Just spoke about Foxborough Two on Elm Street, completely rebuilt in 2023 with 50, 50% increased capacity. And then Crocker Pond is in Rentham on Washington Street, but that feeds a lot of the Main Street area in Foxborough. We installed a, what's called flizer, is a, a scheme of reclosers. For those who don't know what a recloser is, during a storm or some other outage activity, your lights will blink on and off, that's called a recloser. It's like the circuit breaker in your home, but it gives the, the fault a way to clear itself before it trips out completely. Circuit breaker in your home will trip out once you have to go reset it. Recloser analyzes the fault, shuts the power off, gives it a chance to clear, turn itself back on, looks to see if the fault is still there. If it is, it'll open up again. Try, sometimes it'll try a third time, and then it will shut off. So we have advanced reclosers now that interact with each other, and they talk to each other. And what it creates is a, a self-healing network. It will analyze where the fault is and try to backfeed and create the shortest and affect the, affect the least amount of customers as possible. So we put one of these in place in Washington Street and Main Street in the end of 2022 into 2023. So that has been up and operating for well over a year now and doing its job. We've got three newer closers planned for East Foxborough. We've had a tough time with Coacassett Street, Morse, Morse Street, basically heading into Sharon, a lot of motor vehicle accidents on that street, unfortunately. So we are adding three reclosers to that area, which will help shorten the duration of, of outages if they do happen by putting in those, those reclosers. Additionally, due to the nature of how Coacassett Street is a long radial feeder, there's really no way for us to create a tie to, to bring power in from any other area, just we're landlocked between Mansfield and, and Sharon over in that particular area. I was able to work with Mansfield Electric. They're, they're actually allowing us to bring lines from Belcher Street down into Mansfield and up and around to, to Morse Ave. So what we're going to do is put in a, a tire recloser there, so that if we do lose the feed coming from a Coacassett Street down Morse Street, it'll backfeed the other way. So that project was just approved internally. We hope to have that completed by the, hopefully the early fall, beginning of the winter to have that done. We've got numerous electric charging stations installed or in progress. I'm seeing two very large applications per week. Lot of, lot of work there going on. Chris spoke about tree trimming. We just completed all of East Foxborough. They've, last year, we did about 38, 38 miles pruned from April 1st to March 31st, and then this year, just since April 1st, we've done 16, 16 miles pruning.
And so, and I'll, I'll just add into the pruning, they're not just pruning, some of these trees that are, you know, 80, 100-foot pine trees that are dead or dangerous, you know, they're taking full trees down at this point in time as well. So it's a little more than just preventative tree trimming, there is some, some full trees being removed as part of this process.
But it's, it's called our Hazard Tree Removal. There's about 370 we're taking out, starting in June and throughout the summer. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
So unfortunately, because I have another hat that I, I deal with in town, what is the, the process as far as general line maintenance? And what I'm talking about is Chestnut Street for us, which is off of our middle school, constantly goes down, pretty much in every storm. And it's, it's in the fuses that pop almost every single time. In conversations with some of your line people, basically, it's come back, they basically need to be rebuilt, and so I wondered what the process around town is for that.
So we look at how frequent outages happen per town on a feet of, by feeder basis, and if it rises to the top of our worst-performing feeders, it's something that we address by putting in reclosers or looking at what's causing the issues, whether it be trees or motor vehicles or animals or whatever, and then we take to addressing it there. I can look at Chestnut Street and see what, I don't know off the top of my head what the causes are, but it's something I could look into.
Do you have anything?
No.
Dennis, you have anything?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you, because this is the hot seat for you guys. It's always somebody, and I know you guys, when you were supposed to come last time, do I remember that we were having a storm, right? So we didn't, we didn't take Chris, because Chris was busy as well, you know, taking care of the town.
We have a special talent for scheduling things at times when storms come in.
Exactly. So I mean, I guess the only thing that I would add is that, you know, I've, I've listened to somebody come from National Grid, you know, as a member of this board for the last five years.
Probably Ann Malli came a bunch of times.
Yep. And like, for me, I know, I know residents become angry, because yeah, it stinks to lose your power, and I don't think anybody takes it lightly. I appreciate that every time you guys come here, you're, you're giving us something more you've done, you've repaired, you've added, you know, the trees. So I'm down off of Coacassett Street. So our, where I am, our lines are underground, so we don't lose as much as people who, you know, of course, what's bringing it into us. And so, you know, I, you know, I, just in all fairness, you know, I, you see on social media, oh, my power's out again, my power's out again, and then we hear somebody's hit a tree, hit a, hit a pole. And so, I mean, I guess I just want the residents to know that for me, as a resident, as a member as a member of this board, I appreciate all you're trying to do to help the problem. You know, I think sometimes it goes on deaf ears, because it does, it stinks when you lose your power. But I just want to remind people that sometimes it's out of control, out of your control, you know? And it's not weather. When somebody hits, you know, and that whole chestnut onto Morse and, I mean, not Morse, onto Coacit. I think, I think I can think in the fall, yeah, I think three times, like within a couple of weeks. And that was the cause. So I just want to just remind residents that, you know, you know, we're on it as a board, because we catch a lot of flack to us, I'm sure, that Chris does, because people will say, "Well, when is National Grid coming in?" So listen, as long as, for me, as long as I hear, "We're continuing to try to make it better," I mean, that's all we can do, you know? And I think hitting the spots, kind of like what Bill just said, maybe if there's a problem there and he's brought it to your attention, you guys can take a look. So, I thank you. It's not easy to come in here. Like I said, that becomes a hot seat, so thank you very much.
And we appreciate that. And it's worth noting that there is investment happening here, too. The investment at the substation is a significant increase in capacity as well as, you know, the property value, so that there's increased taxes coming out of that, too.
It's one of those things, the infrastructure, you've got to start with the big-picture items before you can kind of hone in on the smaller-ticket items. So, and that's, you know, what they've described here is, you know, rebuilding those substations, increasing that capacity while addressing some of the smaller items as well.
We had to partner with the DPW to work out of the yard next to the substation. It's good cooperation, so.
That's good to hear. I don't lose power a lot on 140, but rumor has it, it's because I'm connected to the stadium.
Just a rumor, I don't know.
I'm teasing you. It's been a long, long story that no one up on that end of town loses power.
Not true.
We do, I know we do.
Any questions? Paige has my card, and I'll certainly follow up on anything that comes out of this.
And just to point out that the team here has been extremely helpful. I mean, throughout the winter, they were reaching out and, you know, we had, poor Dennis was without power for a while, and, you know, we, Rob was very responsive and their team, so we do understand the frustration. It does seem that Foxborough loses power more than other communities. I don't know if that's just anecdotal, but it does, like, I live in Franklin, and I could say it does seem like the power does, like, areas go down here more often.
Well, if I can share a quote from the Rantham Fire Chief.
Yeah, let's hear it.
On December 18th, he said, "We had more damage in this storm than we've had in hurricanes." Like, I know a lot of the damage was related to December 18th, which was a heck of a storm.
That was a heck of a storm. Well, thank you, we do appreciate it, and like Steph said, we appreciate the continued efforts.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good evening.
Did they get the presentation?
They did, yes, in Borodok, yep.
All right, so we'll continue. I have with me Lance Del Peori, who's the Assistant DPW Director/Town Engineer, and Bob Worley, who's the Water Superintendent. We'll now kind of dive into Public Works, Foxborough-specific, what we've been doing the last year and what we have planned in the future. I did last minute move some of these slides around, so they may be out of order with regards to what you're seeing. That's why I wanted to ask and make that clarification. So Foxborough Public Works, you know, we do like to put out there to the public, we are part of the first responders team here in Foxborough, along with police and fire. You know, Public Works is, the motto is, "Public Works Makes It Happen." So we're the crew that's out on the streets, making sure that everything's moving, everything's flowing, whether it's water for the fire department, whether it's the police crews, or it's the roadways themselves. So that's kind of just to kick it off. Public Works, for anybody that doesn't know, we have our administration staff, we have Highway Division, Tree and Park, Vehicle Maintenance, and Water and Sewer. We also have a small engineering department that is, you know, composed of Lance plus our GIS manager. This past year, we did do a small reorganization within the department. Previously Lance was our Town Engineer, we had no Assistant Director. We took the opportunity to create an Assistant Director position while holding that Town Engineer job function as well. Gives Lance a little more day-to-day control over what's happening with the department, oversight of not only the office staff, the admin staff, but also the Highway, Tree and Park, and Vehicle Maintenance on a day-to-day basis. We did create an Office Manager position within the office, which actually led to a reduction in our administrative staff. So we were able to consolidate some job functions and actually really try to become more of a DPW. This is still new. Foxborough's been, only been a Public Works, Department of Public Works for 12 or 13 years now. So we're still working out some of those kinks. The office staff was clearly split down the middle. We had our Enterprise Fund of Water and Sewer, and we had our General Fund for the Highway Department. And, you know, we've merged those together, so we're really trying to create that cohesiveness within the office. This upcoming year, we are adding a Staff Engineer. What we've seen is certainly an increase in work on the Water and Sewer side, General Fund side as well. We have noticed an increase in our inflow and infiltration, our INI into the sewer system. What that means is water's getting from the ground into our pipes, our sewer pipes. It's flowing out of town into Mansfield, and we're paying Mansfield, and we're paying the Sewer District to treat that water, even though it's clean groundwater. So that just comes with the age of the system. Pipes leak, joints open up. This Staff Engineer will be focused primarily on removing that INI. We've estimated, just on some historic calculations, that that could be $120,000 savings annually on the Sewer Department Enterprise Budget. Also, like I said, the ongoing water infrastructure projects and upgrades, it's a never-ending task to get our water system to a point where we're not having so much National Grid having those breaks. But we had to start big and work our way down to the smaller projects, so we're starting to get to that point now. This is kind of where I shift things around a little bit. I want to touch base on two project requests that we had come in from residents. One was a citizen's petition from the Cross Street Pine Acres neighborhood. So if you go up Main Street, before you get to Route 1, Cross Street is on your right. That connects all the way over to North Street. From there, Pine Acres actually goes all the way down to the backside of Patriot Place. So residents put a petition together requesting, oh, I went the wrong way, requesting several things. They wanted us to install a three-way stop sign at that intersection. They wanted speed bumps, they wanted us to lower the speed limit, kind of hitting it on. They think the traffic's going too fast, there's a bus stop at that intersection. They're concerned for the safety of the kids waiting at the bus stop. There's traffic that sneaks its way down for stadium events and think they can get into Patriot Place, the backway. When they find out they can't, they turn around and, you know, try to get out of there as fast as possible. Lance and I took a look at that intersection, looked at the MUTCD, which is the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and kind of went through the tasks of what we could actually do to improve that intersection, you know, at the request of the residents. Fortunately, there's not a lot. We can't make it a three-way stop sign. It doesn't meet their specific criteria warrants that it needs to meet in order to have multiple stop signs at one intersection. It does not meet that warrant. It's a very small intersection, it's not going to meet any traffic requirements for a traffic signal, nor do I think the town would consider putting one in for the cost and the volume of traffic going through there. We did take a look and have the police department go out with their traffic cameras and detectors. They did look at the speed, they did look at the volume. Again, it's a little bit of perception versus reality. The police chief likes that, where it looks like people are going 40 miles an hour when in reality they're going 32. So we did have the police department go out there and look at that intersection. The volume is not there, and the speed is not there as well. There are some short-term improvements we can make. Last fall, just before the winter, I had gone out, we'd gone out, and there's no striping on that intersection. They're kind of too small, narrow country roads. One of the first things that you do when you're trying to calm traffic is to put stripes on the ground. It visually makes you feel like the road is narrower and makes you intuitively drive slower. That intersection itself is this kind of weird Y-intersection, so people on Cross Street have to take the right turn to stay on Cross Street. So if we put a yellow line down the middle of the road, that should help people stay on Cross Street and stay in their lane versus, you know, having a wide turn or cruising down Pine Acres Road. So our intention is this spring, this summer, we'll paint that intersection out as a short-term improvement. We will continue to look at it long-term. If the traffic patterns change over there, based on the data that we have, then we can address it again in the future. One of the other intersections we've taken a look at is Oak Street and Coacit Street. This intersection was unfortunately the location of a pedestrian death a couple of years ago now. This is a T-intersection. You come off of Oak Street, Oak Street's a straight two-mile road, and you hit Coacit Street with a left and a right at a T-intersection. So this one, we hired TEC, one of the engineering firms that does a lot of work for us, to actually go through the traffic signal warrant to see if it met the need for a traffic signal. If it did, if it didn't, what other improvements could we make at that intersection to make it safer, not only for the vehicles driving through there, but the pedestrians as well, trying to cross that from Oak Street to Coacit Street? So this actually came up with some short-term, midterm, and long-term improvements that really we should go into in depth at a future meeting, but I did want to touch on it as kind of the first conversation. Short-term improvements, there are various signage requirements that can be changed and added to increase visibility of the intersection as you're approaching it, let you know that it is a T-intersection coming up. There is currently a flashing red and yellow light above that intersection. Depending on the time of day and the sun, you don't see that flashing beacon above the intersection. So there are some improvements to that light itself that can be made. A lot of times you'll see the black edging with the yellow background, so it makes it pop and stand out a little bit more. So those are some of the improvements. Pedestrian-wise, we could add a flashing pedestrian beacon, similar to what we have on the Common, so that once somebody gets to the end of Oak Street, they're getting ready to cross the intersection, they hit the button, and then it flashes that beacon to let people know, "Hey, there's somebody standing here, ready to cross the street." And it really highlights that pedestrian as they're getting ready to cross. Long-term improvements, consider putting in a traffic signal. So traffic signal at that intersection is approximately half a million dollars. It is the only, it would be the only traffic signal on Coacit Street, so there are concerns with putting one traffic signal in what's probably a four- to five-mile stretch of roadway. Alternatively, there is one at the other end of Oak Street, at Mechanic Street. So there is kind of the pros and cons for going, moving that forward versus making some of those pedestrian improvements on the short-term, midterm, and then continue to look at that traffic signal on the long-term. So that's one of, those are two of the big intersections. One's a more of a minor intersection, Oak Street and Coacit Street is certainly a larger and more concern for Lance and I as far as making some of those improvements. That, I'm going to let Lance jump into our pavement management program and some of the improvements we have coming up in the future.
All right, hello, everyone. So you can see by the graph here, the trend we have in terms of our composite roadway surface rating, the RSR. We had a major investment back between 2012 and 2015, which brought us up from 75 to 82, which we've kind of hovered around for a while and now started to drop by down. The reason for that is there, we kind of lacked funding for extended period of time here in terms of investment into our roadway system. We relied on Chapter 90 heavily, the town, there was no local funding being added to that. Bill Keegan did at the time, we had meetings with him, and eventually we developed a policy to try to target at least roughly a million dollars towards roadway investment, which the town has now provided in capital. We had $350,000 capital for fiscal '24, and we have $350,000 from the town of fiscal '25. So that's going to go a long way towards helping us curb this downward trend. We have a significant number of roadway projects coming up this year and potentially next year, just depending how much we can get to. But we're hoping to have a pretty aggressive schedule, which includes West Street, Dudley Estates, Market, Rock Hill, and Union, and Shoreline, Bragg, Born and Hollow, in terms of mill and pave projects, a number of rubber chip seal, which is, you know, more affordable, life-extending solution, not something you can do twice, you're going to have to mill and pave it after you do that once, but it does sort of extend your dollar in the lifetime of the roadway using those kind of technologies. So a number of roadways there, potentially. And beyond that, we have sideways reconstruction projects, including finishing what was started on Mechanic Street. We still have a number of pedestrian crossings that need to be put in with tactile panels, that's kind of work. Additionally, the other side of the road was always planned to be reconstructed, but LAL, the contractor, did not have time to get to those at the last time they were out there. So we have that. In addition, we have reconstruction of the bottom three areas, Market Street, Rock Hill, Union, Granite we're looking at, South Street, Mill de Paula, and Coacit, Adams de Pratt. Those are all fairly expensive projects. It'll be a pretty heavy investment, but definitely need doing, so we're excited to get those started. And we have the addition of the new sidewalk on Coacit Street, which we have a full design on from Bay Colony, which we will soon be putting out to bid. So we hope to get that started soon. And that was from the previous town meeting. That was the $400,000 that was voted on at that time. So hoping to put that in fairly soon.
Just to, I'm going to add a couple of things. We did hear from the paving contractors today, PJ Keating. They will be in town next week, the week of June 10th. They're going to work in the Dudley Estates, Shoreline, Bragg, Born and Hollow neighborhoods to do the milling up there. So they've got about three days between those two neighborhoods. That milling process takes off the top inch and a half. We're going to remove the berm in those areas, and this is something Lance will touch on in a little bit. But there will be some new berm going in, some reductions in sidewalks where appropriate, and some road narrowing as well, so Lance will touch on that. One of the other big projects we have going on right now, not included in this list, is the Walnut and Route 140 intersection, that we've been talking about for a long time, is finally under construction, along with the Housing Authority project. So that project is twofold. We have the sewer component for that project, which will bring sewer from Central Street back through the woods, through the woods, Walnut Street, past Walnut Terrace, across 140, and on to Walnut Street, going up towards North High Street to service the Housing Authority project. We are working on some expansion of that in the near future with some of the funding we have. The other component to that is the signalization of that intersection at Walnut and 140. So again, that's been a topic of consideration for a number of years, going back to a SERPED study, probably 2016. And that project has come to fruition, mostly in part to Paige's fundraising efforts through the state and federal government. All that funding is coming from outside sources. So their Walsh contracting is underway. They are working on that project and will be for the next, you know, eight to 12 months. The other component to that, because it's in my head, SLT, who is the contractor for the Housing Authority project, has to do some water main work on Walnut Street. We were notified today, and a post should be out, we've notified the bus coordinator. Walnut Street between North High and 140 will be shut down for the remainder of the week during construction hours. So that is something that we have worked with them on. They have to replace a section of that water main as part of that project, so they're going to be working out there, like I said, the rest of this week, potentially into Monday. So that should be out and posted for a public notification, if not already. I'm going to let Lance keep going as far as our impervious area reductions.
All right. So as part of those discussions in terms of extending the town budget and through our other programs, such as the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, the EVP Program, one of the things that comes up frequently is amount of impervious area we have in town. It's a negative towards the environment, it's a negative in terms of... Um, it's a negative in terms of, you know, cost to the town, because the more we have, the more we have to maintain. Um, so we're trying to be more proactive in the sense that as we go through these projects and part of the pavement management program, we try to look at the neighborhoods and see in what ways, um, you know, potentially old-styled, uh, designed subdivisions may be brought to the modern standard and, uh, ultimately save the town, um, a lot of money in the long-term as well. What you had, like, was the old mentality was you build a, the bigger the better. You know, so you build a 40-foot-wide roadway, and that's the peak of luxury, and that's just fantastic. Nowadays, we're seeing environmentally, that's a huge negative, because all of those solids that build up on the roadway get washed into our streams and rivers and, um, contaminate our water sources and, you know, what have you. Additionally, we gotta maintain all that now. So what we're trying to do now is if you have excessively wide areas, you want to bring them back to the standard subdivision that we designed for today, basically. Um, you know, so that would result in a long-term maintenance cost savings. It also has the added benefit of, you know, reducing traffic speeds. When you have a 40-foot road, you want to go the speed that feels comfortable at 40 feet wide. That's pretty fast. Narrow, sorry, excuse me. Narrow roadways inherently slow people down. Um, and I'm not talking excessively narrow roadways, just, um, like a typical subdivision roadway. You know, even that width, you're gonna move a lot slower than you would at a excessively wide. You're gonna move slower in a, you know, if you're going through Lawson Farms, a new subdivision, than you would over on Oak Street. You know, because that road, it feels comfortable traveling very fast on wider roadways. It's just a natural response. So what, so it helps from a safety perspective by doing this in a big way, too. Additionally, it's gonna reduce flooding, because when you have a number of, you know, the more impervious area you have, that means the less the rain is infiltrating into the ground, and that just accumulates and floods out areas, uh, much more quickly. Um, and then it also, like I said earlier, affects water quality in the long-term. So we're trying to be more thoughtful, and some of the ways we're doing that, um, is additionally, trying to make roadways a little narrower in some older subdivisions potentially. Um, you know, maybe we just focus on rebuilding one sidewalk instead of both sidewalks, and trying to think that out and how we go about that, just be a little more proactive and thoughtful. You know, in that way, we'll have more budget, you know, because there's also that added push to start expanding the sidewalk networks in town, which we want to do. But the more we build, we need to be able to afford to maintain that. If we can't afford what we have currently, we shouldn't be extending it. Um, so we need to be responsible with the money we have and our infrastructure that we need to maintain, so we can keep it in a condition that's serviceable for those who use it. So we'll move to the next slide. Uh, so that kind of ties into stormwater. So stormwater budget for this fiscal year is $100,000. It's really, um, not enough. You know, by what we're required to do by permit. The catch basin cleaning and debris removal alone is $95,000. Um, so we do what we can, and we try to be creative about, uh, getting to as many catch basins as we can and disposing that the most cost-effective way we can. So we can't, uh, you know, if we, we would like to clean all of them within a given year, but sometimes we can't get to every single one in the same year. Um, we do have our own, uh, catch basin cleaning truck, which we use to kind of supplement, but it's deteriorated. And, um, you know, when it works, great, but it's not always functional. We're always trying to keep it together and keep it moving, but...
That, that catch basin cleaning truck that we have sits on a 1990 chassis, so it's currently 42 years old. The, the mechanisms of the clamshell that actually lower on the cables and reels to, is, is also, every time it goes out, it seems to break. So, um, it's almost we're causing more damage and spending more money trying to maintain it than we should be. These, these are things, you know, Lance is gonna talk about, but these have changed over the last 15 to 20 years as far as what we're required to do. The process for catch basin cleaning used to be, you just went out and cleaned all the catch basins once a year, and that was it. And you could dispose of that material at a number of local places that just collected that material. They made compost material out of it. Now it's, it's deemed hazardous. You need to prove that it's not hazardous. It needs to go to a lined landfill or some other location that can, is licensed to deal with that material. Same thing with our street sweepings, you know, it's mostly leaves and litter, but that's also considered hazardous. It needs to be tested. It needs to be, you know, proven that it's not contaminated. There are very few reuses, you can reuse it, but it's very limited with how you can reuse it. So, um, these are things, like I said, the EPA and DEP have changed those stormwater regulations in the last 15 years. And those are some of the things we're coming up against now, and a lot of the towns are, are going towards other funding sources.
Thank you, Chris. So yes, you know, the MS4 permit is what really drives this, and it's, uh, I think we're on year six now, um, of the 10-year permit. Um, so we'll see how that changes in the coming years. But, you know, as of now, we're supposed to be targeting that no catch basin ever exceeds 50% full in the, uh, the sump, which is the distance between the bottom of the basin and the outlet of the pipe. So that's, that never, that should never be go beyond 50%, otherwise we need to clean it more than we are cleaning it, so it stays below that level. Um, so that's what we're supposed to be targeting, and that's, that's the goal, and we're doing our best to maintain that. We have a database and, you know, tablet forms to keep track of all what we're doing. Um, additionally, you need to sweep the town at least twice a year, which we do internally. Um, so we're not outsourcing that, at least. We do have a street sweeper that the town owns and is fairly good condition that we've been able to keep up with that requirement. Um, additionally, we use, uh, the Ponsa Stormwater Partnership as, uh, for our education outreach component, which is, they've been a great partner. Um, it's a number of other communities who join into that, and it's a real cost savings to the town in terms of accomplishing those goals of, you know, the town is required to follow through in terms of outreach. I also like to fold into the dams in town. It's kind of a neglected piece of infrastructure. Um, you know, the town has invested $300,000 in the past year through ARPA funding in order just to get our dams up to date, uh, at least from a, um, inspection and regulatory, uh, oversight perspective. It has not to do with construction, except for West Street Dam is now, um, uh, up to a good condition. Um, or is it fair? I'm not sure.
Should be good. It's brand new.
Yeah. At least, uh, in good condition, I believe. Um, uh, you know, but we do have a number of dams in town that are still, um, classified unsafe or poor, which need to be addressed, and, uh, it's gonna take a lot more than $300,000 to do that. Um, so we have gotten grant funding, additional grant funding from EEA to look at the Glue Factory Pond West Dam, which is, uh, 131 Moore Street, I believe. Am I correct? Yeah. Um, it's part of the one that I'm sure you've heard of, that has the building on top of it, that we are, have, you know, graciously been deemed co-owners of. Um, and also the, you know, the property itself is in potential, uh, tax-taking situation. We're deciding how we want to proceed with that. But regardless, the DCR has deemed the town as a co-owner of that dam, so we still have liability there. But in the, so at least we have some, uh, state money, uh, going towards, uh, the design of the removal of that dam at this time. And then we'll have to look into whether or not we want to move forward with that removal, and if potentially, if we do, we want to, uh, seek additional grant funding for the, you know, the removal of the dam. Which hopefully we'll see, you know, what comes up as part of the full design and, you know, how complicated and expensive that it's gonna be in the long-term. So, but we did get emergency action plans for, uh, a number of our dams, Phase 2 studies and other things done, which is great, which, you know, hopefully DCR can stop sending me threatening letters saying, please get this done ASAP. So I'm happy that's, uh, taken care of. You know, I, I bring this up every time, uh, you know, most towns, in order to address this issue, have developed, uh, stormwater enterprise funds and utility fees. You know, I don't, I hate to be the arbit, the one trying to push another fee on the town. I don't want to be that person. But, you know, just so, you know, in terms of one mechanism that a lot of towns are doing in order to have a dedicated funding source like water, like sewers, they set up a dedicated enterprise fund for stormwater. And that utility fee, you know, could be something in nature of $5, you know, per person, per quarter, per year or something, you know, to, to move the needle and have some kind of dedicated, dedicated funding before we have dam collapses or other issues in the town, or we have funding to replace pipes that are undersized, or do something in terms of our aging stormwater fracture, infrastructure as rain intensity and duration continues to increase in the town and flooding becomes more of an issue. So I, you know, I want to, you know, I set up sort of just a basic sort of description of a, a simple, you know, fee here, just to put something in the board's mind. Um, not trying to advocate right this point that, you know, this has to move forward or anything, but just wanna put that in your minds for now as, you know, a one option. It's certainly substantially less than the other communities. I, I think it was Franklin I was looking at it, where it was, um, hundreds of dollars a year, uh, that they were charging residents based on a complicated impervious area calculation.
$160, I think, I pay.
Yep. Thank you.
A year.
So it's, uh, you know, but even, you know, $5 or $10 per unit, uh, flat fee would, you know, be a substantial increase from the, uh, $100,000 budget we're currently, um, stuck with. Um, so, you know, definitely gonna keep seeking grant funding opportunities as much as we can to address these issues, um, in the meantime. But just something to think about, um, you know, something we could potentially put toward at a fall special town meeting. Um, but if it needs to be postponed, that's, that's up to the board. So it's ultimately, you know, leave it to the board in terms of what you want to discuss. Do you have something you want to add?
Well, yeah, I was gonna ask a question then.
Yeah.
Because obviously we have a lot of stormwater piping around the town, but there's absolutely zero funding to do anything with it.
Yeah, so...
Do we have, we have a condition report anywhere that, like you've done with roads and like you've done with water? You know, is there anything out there that shows what the condition of those pipes are and where we're in trouble and where we're not?
There is not. What we're, what we're finding is, um, whenever we do a water main project and we cross all those culverts, which carry water from one side of the road to the other, whether it's a stream or a pond, those are generally older corrugated metal pipes. There's one on West Street that we're working, um, probably next week to have the Highway Division crew will go out there, close that road and replace that culvert in-house. Um, those are pipes that have been put in the ground 60 years ago, um, and haven't been touched since. Metal in the soil that we have around here with water running through them 95% of the time, wear out. Um, similar to what happened on the West Street Dam, the bottom of that culvert was completely gone, and it was just dirt. And that was holding up the road. Um, so we, we do not have a, any sort of a condition index or anything for the drainage system. It's, it's historically been that unfunded infrastructure in the ground. Water and sewer have that enterprise funding, working to replace all that pipe and build that, build a program around that infrastructure. The stormwater has not, which is why EPA and DEP came out with the stormwater management permit, um, going back to 2003, and actually prior to that for larger cities, um, across the US. But, um, it doesn't really deal with the local infrastructure. It mainly deals with making sure the water that's leaving that system is clean. It doesn't talk about, this is a local decision. How do you build more drainage systems in town where you don't have it? Do you have to upgrade the pipe size because it's insufficient from where we are? Um, some of the issues that we've had this past year, where the roads can't handle the water, the drainage system can't handle the water in the, in the volume that it's coming down as quickly as it is. Those catch basins, those culverts are not, were not designed to handle that flow. This is the, the DPW, um, that's the fuel island. Underneath this puddle are underground fuel system, underground fuel tanks. And unfortunately, this, um, poor bus driver's car that was, ended up being totaled by the insurance company, because it got parked in that spot at the wrong time. Elm Street has no drainage on it leading up to this spot. So if you come from the Coacit Street side, there's no drainage until you get to the bus park, the edge of the bus parking lot. So those are things. We have a design. It's probably a million-dollar infrastructure project to put that pipe in the ground. And as, you know, Lance pointed out, we're getting $100,000. Well, now we're getting in FY '25, $100,000 a year to drain, to deal with the drainage. So a lot of that, you know, smaller projects we're doing in-house. We had an issue on Rock Hill Street. We bought the pipe. It was 200 feet. We did that in-house with the DPW with the Highway Division. Um, it was three days of work. If we had more staff, we could probably do that more frequently. Um, but we're dealing with the others, all the other things that we do as well. Um, so those are some of the stormwater updates. And I, I think, you know, that we, Lance and I have talked over the last few years of when's the right time to push that stormwater utility fee. Um, the Noponsa River Watershed is happy to come in at any point in time. They've done presentations and, you know, full studies on towns as far as how much funding is the right amount of funding, what the impact is. The benefit with the stormwater fee is you can hit every property in town. So if you have properties that are currently exempt from taxes, they are not exempt from that fee. So there are, it does open up some revenue opportunities that we don't currently have on the tax side.
Which I would assume means that the town has to pay, too.
Um, I mean, the, it all, it all depends on how you structure it. I mean, there are situations where, you know, right now, the, that we don't charge town buildings for water. So I would assume we could structure it the same way, but... I'm gonna touch quick on just one of our, our big projects that we're excited about. Um, and I want to thank everybody that's supported this, not only at the ballot, but at town meeting as well. Um, the DPW garage, um, did receive funding. We had a bid protest hearing today. The second low bidder, um, protested the bid. We had the hearing with the AG's office this morning. We should hear early next week with that result. We feel confident that we did everything the right way, um, and that the AG's office will find in our favor and will be able to sign a contract with, with Page Construction, who was the low bidder. Um, just to highlight some of the changes, in case I haven't talked about it enough. This is mainly for our vehicle maintenance. There are five bays for the, for the vehicle maintenance component of the DPW. There'll be a vehicle wash bay associated with that. The site will receive upgrades across the entire site. New bus parking area, new stormwater management. The underground fuel system will be removed from underground and brought above ground. That removes a hazard and liability for the town, which I think is a great thing for us, because right now we're on the hook for a million dollars worth of liability if something goes wrong with that underground system. This'll allow us to free up some existing space in the existing garage. We're already working on roof replacement, garage door replacement. HVAC has already been completed. Um, so we're gonna work on that, is continue to work on those projects as well, and, and tighten up the existing infrastructure that we have on-site.
Chris, can you quickly explain the reason for the wash bay? Because I've gotten a lot of people asking why we have to have it inside wash bay, which I understand, but...
Sure. So the, the interior wash bay, um, is a direct impact of our stormwater management permit that has been in place since 2003, that prevents us from washing vehicles outside. We're supposed to wash them over a drain that is connected to the sewer system. Currently, um, we have some floor drains in the garage, but they're not big enough to bring the big trucks in or the school buses in to wash those vehicles. So this interior wash bay is connected, will be connected to the sewer system. So when, whether it's DPW, police, the school buses get pulled into that, that bay, any of that gray water will go into the sewer system where it's properly treated before it gets discharged after the MFN treatment plant.
You may have answered this, Chris, but is the, um, prefab building that there was, there's some personnel, is that staying?
The office building is gonna stay. Yep. So that's the, the three of us. We have offices there as well as the rest of the admin staff. So that's where, if people need to see us, that's where they come. Yep. That'll stay. All right. And Bob's been sitting quietly and patiently, just waiting for his turn. Um, and I'll let Bob touch base on water and sewer, kind of where we've been, what we're looking to do.
All right. Just as a summary, we have 13 technicians, four admin staff, 120 miles of main, uh, three green sand filter plants, 13 wells, 22 miles of sewer main, which consists of six lift stations, because sewage only wants to flow downhill, and if you need to make it go uphill, you need a pump. That's how I got the job. So, some of the projects we're working on, well, first, we had a once every three-year sanitary survey from Mass DEP, which we did spectacularly well on. For the first time in my career, they did not have a single comment about anything. They look at our, the way our finance is structured, our resiliency, our treatment, our staff, how we run our cross-connection program, just everything pass with flying colors, which just proves we do have a really great staff. Um, the biggest thing expense-wise is PFAS treatment. Um, you might have heard EPA just changed the rules on it, again. This is about the fourth rule change we've lived through. Uh, pretty much means every drop of water we have is going to have to go through a PFAS facility. Right now, we're starting with the one with the worst water, which is at Chestnut Street. The project's designed. It's going out to bid this month and hopefully that'll begin construction very soon. Yes, we are planning on the next plant down at Oak Street. Right now, the federal rule for PFAS is four parts per trillion. We're sitting at three point nine five. So I'm just a fraction under the requirement, so that's coming.
And that fluctuates depending on the time of year, depending on rain, depending on cold weather. So we have, we've been testing. Originally, EPA came out with a regulation that was seventy parts per trillion. DEP said, we're gonna do one better and go twenty parts per trillion. And it was a combined total. So we have six chemicals that we're sampling for within that PFAS category and it was a total. And as long as we totaled less than twenty, we were good. EPA just came back around and said, we're gonna make it four parts per trillion for these two and we're gonna make it a collective hazard index for the remainder. And it's very complicated math as far as how you get to that hazard index for the remaining balance. But these are the things that we're now dealing with. Our understanding on the science is that the technology is not actually there to test to the level that they want to see. They want it to be zero. They want zero parts per trillion. There are no machines that can test to zero parts per trillion. So there's no way to actually say, we're at zero. Three seems to be like the limit as far as what we're seeing for, and it changes from one lab to the next. So there are, I just sat in on a presentation last week where they talked about, they took two samples from the same plant at the same time, sent them to two different labs under the exact same conditions, and they were nine parts per trillion apart, when four is the limit. So it's pretty, it's dramatic and it's serious and it's gonna be expensive. You know, EPA and Congress and Auction Claws is doing what they can to get as much funding in our hands as we can. But even if we get three million dollars from EPA for this first treatment plant, it's a third of what we need to build it and it's one-third of one of three plants that we need to build. So it's a serious impact to the water infrastructure and it takes away from us doing that pipeline project that we were just starting to feel like we were reaching up from bottom and able to touch and start to fix.
And so in addition with our, we have a hydraulic model that led us to design a scientific flushing program. Remember when the water turned brown every day? Like every day? It hasn't done that in a very long time, mostly because of this plan. We're able to isolate sections of pipe, direct the water in a very specific pattern, at a very specific rate, get the materials out, and that's greatly improved our water quality. We're working on a raw water main, which will bring the waters from wells four, five and six on Sprague Road up to the Witch Pond Treatment Plant, which is a good thing because I have three wells that need treatment that happen to live in an environmentally sensitive area. And I have a treatment plant that could use some water. So put the two together and it's a perfect solution. Right now, the biggest thing is we're waiting on steel structures to come to cross Route four ninety-five. You know, once we get, you know, the bridge crossing done, we'll be able to start pumping that water. We completed five thousand eight hundred feet of pipe on West Street. North Street, we're designing from Payson to Route One. Part of this will allow us to have higher fire protection in the Route One District. Right now, we're limited with the pumps we have at our booster station. This will let us put in a fire pump. So should there be a problem in that area, we can meet the flows that we're required to have. We have, we're still trying to get rid of the Main Street Water Tank. Surprise, we found lead and heavy metals there, so that turned into a much larger issue than we originally expected. We're working with hazardous waste consultants and we're in process on that. And finally, like Chris mentioned, we are working on the INI to just get all this extra water out of our sewer system so we're not paying to treat rain.
And then I'm gonna wrap up, kind of like I usually have. And we have actually one guest in the audience that I didn't know was gonna be here. So we did have two retirements this past year. Fred Shannon spent thirty-one years working for the Highway Department and retired as a heavy equipment operator. And Barbara Kelly, who is in the audience, retired after nineteen years as the department administrator. So I always like to give praise to those who spent a number of years working for the Town of Foxborough and giving back to this community. And actually, both lived in town as well. So they're both residents who gave that amount of time to this town. And I always like to show our appreciation for them in any way I can, so. So I think that was about the hour that I usually talk for. I don't like talking. Can you tell? I don't talk this much at home.
But you always have a lot to tell us. I mean, unfortunately, there's a lot going on with DPW and water. Bob, I have a quick question. I don't want to get too much into it, just out of curiosity. I've had a couple of residents reach out, one in particular a number of times. And unfortunately, I told them I really don't know much about it. It falls more into planning and conservation, I believe. But he's asking me a lot about development down off of East Street and he's talking about the wells and polluting drinking water. Is that something, you don't have to get into it, but is that something that you guys are involved in? When I hear drinking water, you don't have to get fully into it. I'm just wondering if that's something.
Yeah. So we, anytime a plan comes before the Planning Board or Conservation Commission, the DPW does review that. So we look at that as far as can we provide water? Can we provide the services to it that are required? Is there sewer available? We look at, is it in our Zone One or Zone Two areas? You know, what are the impacts on that development? So yeah, anytime something like that comes in, there are a couple of projects down on the East Street corridor that are coming forward, that have come forward, that we have been looking at and discussing with the Planning Board and Conservation Commission.
And I'm not asking you guys to elaborate. I just wanted, I mean, common sense kind of told me that, you know, when I hear something about, whether it is or isn't, I don't know. I just want to just kind of, I figured you guys are on top of that, obviously.
Can I just give the yearly reminder?
Oh, yeah.
We're in the season of water restrictions and I do like to point out, it has nothing to do with my ability to produce water. It has nothing to do with my wells. It's solely part of our Water Management Act that says thou shall have a water restriction during this time. It's a, it's a permit required activity. They made it more stringent on me this year that if the drought management task force elevates the drought levels, I must implement stricter restrictions based on what level they declare, which again, does not have to do with how much water we can supply.
It's a calendar trigger. May first every year. It's never going away.
Ever.
So, and it's not, again, like Bob said, this is per Mass DEP, per the state. We're not alone. You know, I put a list together of all the other towns around us that are restricted too. So, you know, also on the same side, with the amount of rain we've had in the last twelve to fifteen months, why do you have to water your lawn anyway? So.
Yeah. Well, it's funny because, you know, where I live, because of the switch with the sewerage, I think some of those offenders are going to, you know, because they're gonna get hit both ways, the water, water coming in, water going out. So we're doing our best there to, you know, in our community to kind of pass the word that we're supposed to pay attention to what the rules that the town sets forth, so.
Thank you.
I hope that works out. Anybody else have anything for these guys?
No.
Great job.
Dennis, you have anything for DPW or water?
No, very complete, as usual.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you very much.
There you go. Okay. Okay, so we're gonna hop into discussion about town council and where we are in the process in going towards selecting somebody to replace Mr. Costello. Do you wanna, you or Paige wanna give a little update on where we are?
Sure. Well, I did get feedback from Dennis, so I got his response forwarded to Bill. So I think we, I don't know if Steph and Doc and Deb, if you guys have any thoughts on it, but I think we were just gonna discuss whether to narrow it down or, and what the next steps are. I do think, you know, it might make sense for us to bring in one, two, three firms, you know, for a public discussion for transparency's sake. But I'll defer to the board on, I know how you want to handle that.
Jeff, I know you just came back from a wonderful vacation. Did you even have a chance to look over some of this?
I looked at it a little bit before I left, but not completely.
Okay.
No. But I did watch.
I was gonna give you a pass.
Thank you.
I mean, I looked through, you know, obviously, this isn't my expertise, I said at the beginning. I mean, I think that's why I kind of lean towards Bill and Dennis. Do you guys have anything specifically you want to reach out? I mean.
Well, I think we're kind of tasked to get this thing moving because obviously, we lose Pat shortly. And I think, you know, depending on how the board overall views this, we had four decent candidates, I think. You know, I think I have a first choice myself and I'm sure maybe Paige does, but.
Yeah, I do too, yeah.
So I'm not gonna put my two cents out at this point as to how you want to proceed. If you want to bring in, I mean, it is a pretty, you know, pretty big decision because they're obviously gonna be living with this party for a while. It's not something you bring in and eliminate. But, you know, the candidates we had out there, there were, you know, I think out of the four, there were three that if I was gonna push the interview, there were three that I would say and one I would drop. But I think there are some, you know, some benefits in one or two of them. But again, it really is how the board wants to proceed.
Dennis, you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how Bill ranked them. I thought, you know, quite frankly, two of them were, you know, clearly above the other two. And I think we, at the last meeting, agreed to eliminate one for, mostly because of their size and complexity and they probably wouldn't serve us well because we'd be one of many, many clients. So it got down to three and out of the three, I thought there were two that were clearly superior to the third one. So Bill and I haven't compared notes, but that's kind of, you know, we're, I think, I think we could get away with having two come in to be interviewed.
So I think that we may not be on the same page because the big one actually is not the one that we were thinking about dropping, or at least I'm thinking about dropping, out of the group. You know, and again, there are very big differences between the two of the groups that we could potentially bring forward, similar size, amount of lawyers, you know, similar capabilities, a little bit more local. And the third one that was the big one, obviously represents half the, more than half the state of Massachusetts right now and is, you know, really kind of the behemoth in the industry. But that would be the contrast. That would be whether you went to one that is that large with that many capabilities or did you go for one that was probably, you may look at you as more of a, you know, a firm that they wanted to represent as well. Obviously, the big one wants to represent everybody and they've kind of proved at that point. So anyway, I think one of the ones I was dropping was not the big one. So I don't know, Paige, where you were.
I would agree. I would agree that that was not where we were leaning. But we had, we didn't want to sort of sully the field, so we wanted to make sure each board member had their own independent analysis without sort of saying what we thought.
I guess two questions. Let's say we bring the three of them in. Is it on a separate day or would we have it? Or during, we'd have to do it because how long do you think each would take to interview?
Well, I think when we went through it, basically, we were through within a half hour on each one of them, but.
They tight. I mean, that'd be tight because some of them, you know, they want to talk. They want a chance to speak and you're gonna have questions. So it ended, for us, it ended up being an hour. We could probably shave some of that off, but a half hour would probably start running late.
Yeah. And it's hard because there was only two of us. Now they're a much larger group asking questions, so.
So, you know, my thought would be, let's bring the three of them in and then hear what they have to say.
So do we know that the, did we already drop one of them?
No.
No. So I'm gonna put Dennis and Bill and Paige on the spot. And, I mean, can we see if we know who we're gonna drop? Well, actually, we do. No, Dennis thought he was gonna drop the big one, right? Okay. And who were you thinking, Bill?
I was dropping Murphy and his.
Hey, that's why I put down the bottom of mine, not knowing as much as you guys do, but I happened to put that down the bottom. Obviously, I know you and Paige.
Qualified firm, but quite honestly, in the interview process, didn't.
Didn't seem like the right fit.
Right.
Okay. All right. Dennis was, was Murphy, were they like up near your top?
I guess there's been some history of Murphy and has that I think might be a factor, but I really had, you know, me, Palaman and I had that firm as the top. I thought we had ruled out the large firm. You know, one of the factors is you go into this, a lot of them have real depth and real expertise and could do a great job. But I think there is a material difference in cost that should be factored in here.
Yes. We did note a difference in the hourly rate for one in particular was higher.
Hourly rate, whether they bill for paralegals, travel, there's a lot of, it can get very expensive if you really drill down into the, their fee structures.
Deb, anything in particular?
We had talked about one firm providing perhaps everything, both counsel and relate, you know, to human services relations, I'm losing the correct word.
Labor.
If that was.
I'm sorry?
You were saying labor?
Yes, yes, thank you.
I mean, if that was a choice, I would, you know, if that was a concept to think about, I don't think there's, of the three that are remaining, I think all three could do it. So that's not eliminating.
Okay.
Anybody in the process.
But I did want to remind that because I liked that concept.
And that's not a decision you have to make upfront. It's a decision that you have the ability to make at any point in time.
Right, yeah. Exactly. And, you know, just to be fair, after our last meeting, Jamie Kenny reached out to me and she had just basically said she was a little surprised when she heard that, you know, we were specifically, you know, mentioning that a firm may take over labor. And I told her that, you know, that was not, you know, the intent of the conversation. It was just the reality of, you know, if we do pick one of these, is that a direction we're gonna go? Not that we were, you know, she just wanted the opportunity, you know, to talk to the board if we went, if we were gonna go in that direction. And, you know, in all fairness, I think it would be fair for her at least to, you know, if we had a reason. But I told her that was not the intent of mentioning that that was a possibility. That's just the reality of searching and what they offer.
But I think in fairness to the town, basically, when we hired legal counsel, the reason that we went outside was that was not Pat Costello's wheelhouse. And so therefore, we didn't really have the option with current town council to have labor inside. So that's really how she got involved with the town in moving forward. The town always has the right when it hires legal counsel to make a decision as to who is gonna serve on that for us, whether it's gonna be one group. There are advantages to one group doing it and there are disadvantages to one group doing it. So, I mean, you have to make that decision, but it would be made, in my mind, solely on the efficiency of being able to manage the town.
Yeah. But we don't have to. Yeah, but we don't have to, a decision like that doesn't have to be made, we're gonna, we're gonna look at who we want to be, and if that's some, a direction we wanna go, that would be something we would, we would discuss afterwards, that's not a discussion we have to have now. Basically, I guess my point is, I mean, that might be an option for us, I guess we have to see who we pick first, and we go from there.
Yeah, I think all the firms did indicate, Bill, right, that we were, they would like to do our labor, but they also understood that it's a practice by some towns to have separate labor, and it's really a preference on the part of this town, so I think you could stick with, you know, Clifford and Kenny, or you could also consider another firm, and if you were to change, I do think you might wanna talk to, you know, some, our police chief, our fire chief, it's sort of, sort of that practical application of our work with Jamie, to just see how, the level of satisfaction, but I do think we'll get town council, and then as a labor issue comes up, then we could make a decision.
Exactly, okay, so.
Let's bring the three in.
Yep.
I think it was a good idea to have, you know, a screening committee whittle it down one, let's bring the three in.
Yeah, Dennis, you're okay with the drop of Murphy and Hess? Is that Hess, is that how we say it, Hess?
Murphy, Hess, Tucci, and Lehane.
Yeah, based on some additional information, I am, yes.
Okay, all right, so, do we, do we have to, do we have to vote on that? That's just for us to.
So now the logistical issue, we'll be trying to find a night where we can, everybody can get together, that's always fun.
Right.
Yeah, and.
And we gotta move.
As Doc just mentioned, so we would, we would wanna do more than one in one night, or no, one?
I think we'd wanna bang them out one night.
Just pick a night and do all three.
Well, for me, I feel like, like when everybody's fresh right there, like we've listened to all three, for me, that's fine, I just wasn't sure.
So we have to do between now and our next meeting, so that we'd have the ability to present it, so. Do we wanna try, do we try to get a schedule right now?
I think, I would like to, because I think it could be problematic.
We should probably find a couple, if we can find a night or two that works for everybody, because then we have to obviously turn around and see if those groups can meet that, so.
Exactly.
Might need more than one date.
So we're probably looking at next week, tenth to the fourteenth.
Yeah, so just so you know, I don't know if you need me there, but I'm out till, I'll be back the 12th, and then the 12th is obviously, most of us are, already have commitments, so, that leaves the 13th.
So I guess you would need to decide if you want Paige, you could do the 11th or the 13th, the gallery room is open.
Let's try for the 13th.
13th.
What day of the week is that?
Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
We can't do Thursdays.
Excuse me, I take that back, the planning board is in the gallery room at seven o'clock on the 13th.
How about Friday, the 14th? I know it's no one's favorite day, but.
Wide open on the 14th.
I wonder what.
What about this, end of 17th?
The 10th is also an option for the gallery room, but Paige is not available.
Right, what about the 17th?
17th conservation is in the room at 7:00 PM.
Is there, can we tell, like, is the McGinty open, or library, can you see those, or no? I bet we could find a spot, I bet you we can find a spot.
I mean, obviously, quite honestly, it could be Paige's office, there's not that many people, they're gonna come in with a couple with each one of them.
Well, we got the conference room.
Well, it has to be a public meeting.
Yeah, we have to allow other, we have to allow the public to attend, and it would probably, if we can, it'd be nice to put it out on cable just for transparency, I mean, if we can.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, I don't mind if we meet on a Friday, I mean, it's up to, it's up to everybody else, I mean, I don't know if that.
I'd like to back it up, maybe to the 10th, Paige, you've already interviewed them.
I have, I know who my top choices are.
She doesn't necessarily have to be here for the interviews, she's already talked to them all with Bill, so if the five of us can get together on the 10th.
And that's, that's a Monday.
Monday.
We could start earlier, if that.
Deb's vetoing.
What day of the week are you available, Deb?
Typically Tuesdays, and typically Mondays, but not the 10th.
Okay.
Number ones to the 12th, so we're not worried about Paige being there?
No, we can do wins.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'll talk about that a little later.
No, I don't.
I mean, could you do it, are people around earlier in the day, and it could be recorded and broadcast, if it was Monday, again, I'd have to check with those firms, but if it was a block, say between 12 to 3, oh, no, you work, okay, Tuesday.
Tuesday's golf day.
Well, in the morning.
What if it was Tuesday, starting at a 1:00 block?
You could do one.
You just, oh, you said Tuesday's, okay.
Well, I'd be have to go in by 3:30.
Well, you could probably whip that out.
12, Tuesday at 12.
I'm not gonna ask, and we do back to back, Tuesday, yeah.
Yeah.
It's during their workday.
Yeah, they probably.
If they wanna work for us, go find the time to get there.
Tuesday, 11th, say like noon to 3?
Yes.
Oh, Dennis, are you? You can confirm, you can confirm with us afterwards, Dennis?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, right now, do you feel like that Tuesday would be okay?
Right now, probably, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Well, now, if for some reason that date didn't work, would you want to try the following Tuesday, just in case, like for the other group, if it doesn't work out, that the group of them can't do it, would that following Tuesday, that would be the 18th, do you wanna see if there's a window there for them?
We meet that night.
Yeah, I know, but during the day, I mean, just as a fallback, during the day.
What about the 13th?
Yeah, whatever works.
Starting at.
Gang.
What day is the 13th?
Thursday.
Or what about Friday morning?
No.
No, you work.
I work.
All right, so it has to be the 11th, between 12 and 3?
That's it.
That's it?
I'll have to send someone.
Tuesday, the 11th, between 12 and 3.
Some partner's gonna be open to make a presentation.
They all were very amenable to the last meeting.
All right, here we go, next Tuesday at 12.
Okay. Okay, so we're off to boards and committees and commissions, okay. Okay, first, first we were gonna, look at the handbook, Katie, do you have anything you want to add, I know you've been working very hard at this.
This handbook was just amended to reflect the policy that was adopted last meeting, and I did have Pat Costello look that over, and Leah Gibson did give it an eye as well as a note, this is one of her legacy projects.
She was very involved before she stepped down, yeah, that was nice of her, for sure. Okay, so basically, we're just, are we giving an official vote on it now, or we actually voted, you just wanted us to see?
You would need to vote this, as that's, it was first adopted July 20th, 2021, so this would just be a revision by the board for today's date.
Okay.
Motion, we accept the Foxborough Board Committee Handbook as presented.
Deb, do you have, do you have a motion, motion, does Debbie have a motion?
Yeah, it's in board docs.
Yeah.
I'm not in board docs. Stand by.
I can do it.
Yeah, please.
Motion to approve the updated Foxborough Board Committee and Commission Handbook.
Second.
Any discussion? Dennis, you have anything?
No.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
You're gonna do it.
Oh, that's right.
Mark, yes.
Bill, yes.
Stephanie, yes, Debbie, yes?
Dennis, yes.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, just so you know, Dennis, you're sideways, there you go, that's better.
Making us a little dizzy, Dennis, okay, all right, okay, discussion and vote on the select board liaison list, Doc, do you know that we?
Yeah, I watched, I watched the meeting.
Yeah, are you, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I know you put me in a couple of positions while I was gone.
Excuse me?
One or two.
What was it, Town Asset Review Committee?
Yeah, and was there another one, but I'm good, I'm fine with that, I'm fine.
Well, in fairness, I said, if, if I didn't want it, you know.
It's fine, I laughed.
We just figured, I figured we could, we could make a little fun of you while you weren't here, enjoying yourself on vacation.
On the Amalfi Coast, it was tough.
Okay, all right. So Katie, are we, are we voting on this?
Yes, so the next would be.
This is everybody, we kinda did the vote here, this is all the other liaisons from, like, the committees to?
So this, this list, or the next item is just voting on the town liaison list for said board, committee, or commission, and then we were asking that a select board member also be part of the liaison, so that board or committee or commission could keep that one of you informed of just ongoing news, if you wanted to attend the meetings, just things like that, so I didn't know if we wanted to just.
So, so did you want us to go right down the list now, and?
That would be great, if we could just get that, and then I can put that in the.
We're talking so much about boards and committees, I'm losing track.
Hopefully, this is the last meeting.
I'm losing track, okay, all right, so there's a lot here, obviously, okay, all right, so let's just start at the top, okay, so Audit Committee, all right, Dennis, just because you are our rep on, oh, wait, we can't do that, right, because he's already on the Audit Committee?
Well, so he'd be on it, like, he could give you an update.
We already placed him for that one.
Yes, of course.
Okay, all right, sorry, guys, these committees, it's tough work, I can't even imagine what you're doing, Katie, all right, um, all right, Agricultural Commission, any takers?
If it's any consolation, I don't think they meet.
Or else you'll have one, okay.
I was gonna say, who are they?
I mean, I haven't heard of a meeting, but I might not be in the know.
All right, put me, put me down, just put me down, just in case. All right, Board of Assessors, going to the finance people again, too.
I'll take it.
All right, Bill, okay, Board of Health, that's Doc, I think.
Yeah, I'll take that one.
Okay. Board of Recreation, Board of Recreation, would you like them to, to give the update to you? Yes, all right, I thought that was a perfect one, all right, let's lay that one on Deb. All right, Board of Registars, tell me, tell me what that one would entail, could I do that?
Sure.
I'll take it, all right.
So you won't need one for town management? I'll take that one.
Board, right, all right, Board of Water and Sewer, anybody want it? Bill, Bill said he'll take that one, Boyd and Library Trustees, Doc's right behind the house.
Yeah, right around the corner.
Yep, Cable Television Advisory Committee.
I'll take that one, I'll work with them.
Canoe River Aquifier Advisory Committee.
They also do not meet, well, we tried to disband, but.
Oh, okay, well, I was, I was gonna, I was gonna take it, not because I didn't know they were gonna meet, but I'm, that's where I'm getting some, some letters, and that would make me, I know it's not a board of selectmen thing, but I just told them as a resident that I would be interested, so maybe I'll find out, it's too bad that they don't meet, because they're, they're registered in that project, but Capital Improvement, we already know that's Bill, Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee, so one of us, one of us takes that, too, that's just to get the update.
Yeah, I'll do it.
All right. Clean of Foxborough Committee, I'll take that one, unless anybody else wants it. Conservation Commission, I would take Conservation if nobody else wants it.
Is Dennis still around?
Well, I don't hear anybody else jumping up, that's why I just figured I'd better grab some, and seeing how some of mine don't meet, I should, I should grab a couple extras. Hey, Dennis? Dennis still there?
We lost him?
He's gone.
He's gone. Smart move.
Yeah. We can put him on a couple.
Yeah, I think he, I think he had, I think he had.
We'll just save the best for him, you don't show up, you get that.
I know, I think, I think he had a stop at 9:00.
Okay, are we gonna assign him a couple?
Yeah, we'll assign him a couple, right, we, I leave Conservation, I took, Council on Aging and Advisory Board, me, Debbie. That would be a good one for Deb, all right, Design Review Board, who do, oh, that's Doc, right, is that what we gave you, Design Review, no, no, I'm sorry, no.
Your Town Asset Review.
Give that to Dennis.
All right, Dennis, that's for Dennis, Economic Development, we gave Deb, okay, Employer Insurance Advisory Committee, I'm thinking you, Bill, I don't.
Yeah, I'll take that.
Yeah, I just, you would know more about it than us, Foxborough Commission on Disability, I'll take them, that's kind of near and dear to my heart, Foxborough Cultural Council.
I'll do that.
Doc, Foxborough Housing Authority.
I'm already on that one, honey, is that the one?
Yeah, you're on that, yep.
Oh, you are?
Aren't I, didn't we have a meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm already on that one.
Historic District Commission.
Did you get Housing Authority, did you already do that one?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, that's you, oh, I didn't hear that one, okay, I thought you were on the cultural, I'm like, what?
Should we give Dennis, does anybody else want that, should we just give that one to Dennis for now?
Yeah.
All right, Dennis will be historic, Historical Commission, is it?
Give them both.
Yeah, I would do both.
Yeah, they'll latch together, okay, Permanent Municipal and School Building Committee.
I'm on it, so.
Okay, Personnel Board.
I'll take it.
I'll take it, oh, you want it?
No, no, if you want it.
No, 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 that's probably better for you than it is for me anyhow, I was just gonna take, because nobody was, eh, I'll take it, all right, how about the Planning Board?
That's a good one, everybody wants that one.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Yeah. School Committee? They thought Bill ran, right? All right, Stadium Advisory Committee.
I'll take that.
Deb? Survey Board, what's, tell me what that is, oh.
Take surveys.
They do, they.
Oh, surveys like land survey?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody?
Dennis.
All right, Dennis, if Dennis doesn't want any of these, I'll, you know, it's just a, you know, it's just us getting the update, it's not, you know, if he doesn't want any of them, I'll step up to a couple of them, Town Asset Review Committee.
That's what we gave Doc.
Yes.
Okay, Veteran Services Advisory Committee.
I'll take that.
Deb? Zoning Board of Appeals.
Who is planning?
You're planning?
Yeah, so I'll take that one, too.
Okay, oh, that wasn't, that wasn't too bad, was it? All right, so now, now we have to make an, oh, wait a minute, do we have to vote each one of these?
No.
No, okay. Okay, and we don't, so just that, we just.
Motion to approve the Select Board Liaison List for Boards and Committees and Commissions.
Mr. Higgins isn't gonna come after us, is he?
No, I think, I think that's, that's perfect.
We went through each one.
Okay. Oh, Doc, you seconded it. Yep, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, because Dennis is gone, we can.
Dennis is gone.
We can, okay, all right, wow, look at us, okay, all right, da, 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 okay.
Just a motion.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, motion, Deb, for Barbara Kelly? Motion to approve, motion to appoint Barbara Kelly to the Council on Aging slash Human Services Board for a term to end May 31st, 2027.
Start it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep. What?
Amy Burdos, the next one.
Let's see, Amy Burdos, oh. Sorry. Motion to appoint Amy Burdos to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for a term to end May 31st, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next one, Deb?
Motion to re, to appoint Gary Whitehouse to the Permanent Municipal Building and School, Permanent Municipal and School Building Committee for a term to end May 20, May 31st, 2027, or, no.
No, who just, uh.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye.
He's not here.
He's not here.
He dropped off.
All right, really wanna do the next one?
Motion to appoint Gary Whitehouse to the Personnel Board for a term to end May 31st, 2026.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye.
So what happens?
Doesn't pass.
Ties are no.
Okay, um. Okay, now we have, so, are we having a little discussion about this, or, or, or we ju, we just, we're just making sure we get it back rolling, okay.
What, what, what do you mean?
For the, the.
Six point seven.
Yeah, the open, the open space, somehow, somehow it got, it got a little dropped off, um, Katie, you wanna, you wanna explain it better than me, I'm just saying dropped off, is that basically, we lost track of it?
Yes, so we just wanna reconfirm and reappoint those people.
Okay.
So it's four voting members, plus three voting liaisons, one from the Rec Board, one from Conservation Commission, one from Commission on Disability, plus ex officio to be the town manager, one Select Board Member, GIS Analyst, Director of Human Services, Recreation Division Director, Conservation Agent, and the Land Use Director. So, that's the makeup.
Okay, so, motion to reconfirm Foxborough's Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee membership, four voting members, plus three voting liaisons, one from the Rec Board, one from the Conservation Commission, and one from the Commission on Disability. Ex officio to be the town manager, one Select Board Member, GIS Analyst, Director of Human Service, Recreation Division Director, Conservation Agent, and the Land Use and Economic Development Director, term to be three years.
Second.
Question. So, we're specifically calling out the Recreation Director. Do we have that position?
Well, it's, the, the position itself exists.
As a director?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I guess then the other, the other one is, after we do this, do we go back and name somebody? I just, just saw the Board of Selectmen, didn't I, or did I not? Oh.
You already picked one, that's Devin.
Oh, oh, okay, for the open space, we, did we, did we do open space?
No.
No, cause it fell off.
We didn't do open space.
Oh, cause it fell off.
Okay, so, so we can do this, and then, should we circle back around and put, put somebody from the board?
Yes, that'd be great.
All right, so, um, no, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, should we do that right now, or should we add that at the end? Okay, so, um. Bill, wanna just make a motion to, um, to put Deb on the open space?
Is it just her, though, or do we have to?
Yeah, who are the other members, Katie? Do we, do we have appointments?
Eight point eight, six point nine.
Right.
Oh, that's right, do we have everybody? I'm sorry.
Yes, we do, but then the, the ex officio, those do not receive appointments, so those will just come from, um, those are just the individuals that hold those seats.
Okay, do we, do we have all those in board docs to, to name right now, or?
Um, yes, the individuals below.
Six eight, six nine.
The following three.
Six eight, six nine. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, six ten, too, yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't scroll all the way down. All right, Deb, you start with six eight.
Make a motion to appoint Lauren Bata to the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee for a term to end May 20, May 31st, 2027.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Select Board makes a motion to appoint Jim Green to the Open Spaces and Recreation Plan Committee for a term to end May 31st, 2027.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to appoint Cindy Tracy to the Open Spaces and Recreation Plan Committee for a term to end May 31st, 2027.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, add Deb.
We have to make one for Deb.
Make a motion for Deb.
Oh. Sorry.
No, it, it's not on there, but.
Yeah, I know, motion to appoint Deb Dardino to the Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee for a term to, well, it'll be the same term?
Yes.
Okay, term to end May 31st, 2027.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, um, you're welcome. You're back in business now. Okay, uh, next we have discussion about the Child Sexual Abuse Committee bylaw. Okay, so. So, um, as Katie was trying to clean up Boards, Committees, language, you know, the last couple of meetings, we've done a, a lot of voting on changing some language. There was a question here about, um, for lack of a better word, terms. There was some language here that sounds like after a term ends, that you're supposed to step down. So, Katie went to Bob Cutler. Bob confirmed that the way he, he read it was that, that's what is supposed to happen, that, um, supposed to step down for three years, and then you can get back on. We reached out to Town Council. He read it the same way. And then, so, I know we have people from the committee here tonight that wanna, so we're gonna have a discussion about it. So, is there, is there somebody specifically, Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the committee. Jim, for the record, Jim DeValis, Foxborough resident, and Bill Dudley from the South Foxborough Community Church.
Thirty-six North Grove Street.
Also, for the record, I'm, I'm not on the committee, but following, following your last meeting, I got a call from, from the Select Board and from Administration asking for some of the history and some of the intent for the bylaw, so, and I know it's a long night, and I'll try to be brief. So, I was a selectman at the time, back in 2013, I'm gonna give you, some of you may know and some of you may not, what happened in 2013, 2014. A little bit of history of the, how, what the bylaw is, and my thoughts on longevity, the term limits, and, and the, also the vote that went on earlier about being a resident from the last meeting. So back in 2013, um, a resident and then more residents came to the Select, Select Board Table and basically said they were molested by Bill Sheehan. Bill Sheehan was a teacher, he was a scout leader, he was a rec leader, and general good guy around town, I guess was his reputation, but he systematically molested, some say dozens, some say hundreds of kids in the 60s, 70s, and 80s, boys. So, before he got caught, he got a letter of recommendation from the school committee, and he went out to Florida, and he continued to do it. When we got wind of it, when the, some of the victims came in front of us, we sent, back in the day, Chief O'Leary and his crew down to Florida to arrest him, but basically, he was in a, he was in a diaper and not very coherent with Alzheimer's. So we left him there, and he recently passed away. So, a number of the victims came to us, we had a lot of meetings, and the one thing that they asked us was, can you do everything you can so this does not happen again, undetected? And, and it's kind of a powerful statement, it will happen again, that's human nature. Wrong human nature, but it will happen. So he asked us to consider ways so we make it so it doesn't happen again, unattended, and to the credit of many of the people that came, a lot of them were still residents, they weren't interested in lawsuits, they weren't interested in, other than they wanted to protect the children. So, one thing stuck in my mind, the fir, I was chairman at the time, and I wanted to apologize to the victims. I wasn't here in the 60s, 70s, and 80s, but I, there's no doubt in my mind that it happened. I remember Town Council at the time said, do not apologize, because you will get sued and your wife will get sued, cause we have no insurance. Administration was saying the same thing. I think Mark Sullivan, Linda Walsh was there, and we basically said, this is not the approach we were gonna do. We were gonna form a committee, and it was not gonna be any regular committee. And the, the discussion that I was hearing last week about residents, and there was not one question about what this committee did, or what they've been doing for the last 10 years. So, we went to town meeting, and I think it's the only committee voted on by the town meeting, so the selectmen cannot get rid of it. The only way you can change it or get rid of it is to go to the town meeting with a warrant article and vote it out. So there was a $2,500 budget, and there was goals and objectives in the scope of what the Child Safety Committee could do. And, and it's, it's pretty self-explanatory. The first thing we did when it went to, so when we wrote up the article, it was called the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee, so Town Council said, we can't call it a Child Sexual Abuse Committee, because it's gonna make people uncomfortable. We're gonna call it a Child Safety Committee, which you think of bicycle helmets and falling off bicycles. So we made a, a motion on the floor to say, if you're gonna be serious about it, it's child sexual, it's about boys and girls getting molested, it passed unanimously, I think there was one person voted against it. So, the, the important thing about that committee was, it's, it's gonna live in perpetuity, it's gonna be funded. There's a $2,500 budget, and I guarantee you, there's more money spent on that every year, but it's all volunteers and donations. The important thing on the, on the committee, this is made of seven, seven people. Foxborough Public Schools, Foxborough Board of Recreation, Foxborough Public Safety, Foxborough Religious Institution, Foxborough Council on Aging and Human Services, a relative private education or social institution, and the seventh one is called Member at Large. Initially, we thought Resident at Large, more we talked about it, and when I say talk about it, we went to the school committee, the advisory committee, the Rec Board, there's probably a dozen moms groups and things that we went to. In that one position, if, if the first six one that I listed, whether it's schools, or they're, they're attached to an organization or a group, and they can be influenced, or, you know, you can kind of get lost in politics, the, the Member at Large is independent, it's autonomous, and it does not have to be from Foxborough, cause we said some of the best insight we might get can be from other towns. The important thing was to protect the kids, to train the coaches, to train, not having individuals by themselves with kids. So, um, so that passed unanimously. When this came up last week, um, there was a lot of discussion of the, the bylaw of the town saying you don't have to be a resident, and most committees are residents, and, and Bill, you had good points. I agree with some of them, that you don't, sometimes it's the best interest to be a resident, and you're, you know, if you moved down the Cape, why would you come here and influence? But this particular position does not have to be a resident. Now, you guys voted last week, you voted again today, it is in the 2021 handbook that the Selectman does have the authority to appoint somebody if they're not a resident, if they have that ability. I pulled up the meeting minutes from 2021 July, and it was codified. I don't know why you guys are voting again, but Stephanie, you were on the board at the time, and it was unanimous for that, Doc, you were on it as well, you weren't here at the last meeting.
I know, I would have brought it up.
You gotta pass.
Yeah, well, but I would have brought it up.
Yeah, but just because you can't find meeting minutes, don't revote, because you don't think, I mean, it's, if you go to the town website, you see this, it's a town bylaw, it has a date on it, the minutes are published, you guys already voted on this. So. So the, the, the one item of being a resident, it was a, you, you voted to keep the bylaw, to codify it, that you don't have to be a resident. The only discussion you had about the, the one person was if they were a resident or not, and the reason was you voted against him, cause he wasn't a resident. There were three people to be voted last meeting, there was one from Public Safety. Get the, I always, all right, and that was Christina, and she was, I don't even think she's a resident, is she a resident? Oh, she's not a resident, but she was voted in. Bob Correa, who was the Member at Large, was voted out, because he wasn't a resident, and then Linda Walsh, who sits on the Human Service, I'm sorry, Educational and Social, was voted in. So what happened last night, you had a bylaw that the town meeting said, fill it with seven people, three people came in for three positions, backed by the committee, and you only voted two, and right now, there's no chairman because of that. So, that, that's the one item that I, I just couldn't figure out. Now, the Selectman voted it out, there's no plan to ask any questions, interview, nothing, but just because he wasn't a resident, when you had the ability to do it, and four minutes before that vote, you voted, it's okay not to be a resident, but then you gave the answer that you're not a resident, so you can't come in. So right now, there's no chairman. The other point on longevity, we, we brought that bylaw through every imaginable committee in town, everyone supported it, there was no reference to anything on there that there was term limits, okay? Any bylaw that goes to town meeting, it goes to Town Council. So Town Council took our bylaw, and they reviewed it, and they had three changes to it. So back at the day, it was 2014, it was Dick Gellerman. Dick Gellerman sent a email to Bill Keegan, who was the town manager at the time. Bill Keegan sent it to Sandra Herman, who's the administrat, the secretary. And the sec, secretary, and her, Sandra sent it to the full board, which is Feldman, Capola, DeValis, Gray, and Brew. In that email, they said, everything looks good, there's three changes, it doesn't affect anything. What, what that council said at the time was, these are the changes. We adopt it as an addition to the general bylaws, to, the other change was to provide for initial staggering terms. So everyone's got three terms, everyone can't come, so they staggered it. And the other third change was, add a saving clause at the end, and basically, that's just references MGL, right, standard. Then he went on to say, these changes don't affect anything that you did. At no time was there ever a discussion of term limits, stepping off, taking a timeout, and then someone come in. This board has been in, in effect since 2014, through Bob Correa. And, and I'll say this publicly, and I, I wasn't gonna say it, but he put it on his application, he was a victim of Bill Sheehan back in the day. So, he's got a daughter in town, he's got grandchildren in town, he has taken this bylaw, he's gone to Middleborough with us to get that town to do it, he's gone to the state senate, he's gone to the state house. We're trying to make the changes in legislation going on 10 years now, for, to change the whole state for mandated reporters. So the discussion last night, last week, was, are you a resident, no, you're not a resident. You voted him off, we've got no chairman, if you wanna do term limits, you're basically tonight voting off everyone but two people, okay? Because they've all been, a lot of them have been on for more than one, more than one term. So you've taken a committee of seven people and dwindled it down to two. If you take the residents into the equation, you lose a superintendent, you lose Christina from Public Safety. What happened last week with no plan and no discussion, and the ripple effect, affected what town meeting did, and right now, we don't have a full committee. So, I'm, I'm a little harsh, because, you know, and, and then I saw, I saw the, you know, the, the citizens input and, and the applications that came after the fact, but I'm just blown away that, that nobody's reached out to anyone on the committee or Bob Correa before last meeting, before they voted him out. If you believe that you need to be a resident, and, and I respect you for saying that, that's your belief, you voted against it. If you think you can be a resident, why would you vote him out for being a resident? It made no sense last week, so, I'm, I'm a little hot heated, cause there's an entire town and a lot of victims that focus on this, but there wasn't any focus at all last week on this. And, and as a result, there's a lot of upset people, and, and the victims that watch that are just shaking. um that watch that are just shaking their head right now.
So first, let me let me address one at a time. Um is there, is there something there that says that the at-large, specifically at-large member does not have to be a resident? What what we were going on was the policy that Katie found that and why it came up is because she couldn't find it voted on anywhere. That's why that came, that's why that came back to us.
So I went online today and I found the meeting minutes from July twentieth, twenty twenty one. And it just matches the exact date of the Foxborough Board of Committee Handbook that says, adopted by the Board of Selectmen, July twenty twenty one.
Okay.
So you find that and then you go through.
I'm not putting this on you, but were you able to find that or no?
I did not find that, no.
So so it's online under the twenty twenty one and what it says is, motion to approve the revised Board of Committee Handbook with refinement, et cetera, et cetera. It was unanimous.
And it's it specifically says.
It does, and it was Leah Gibson, Stephanie McGowan, Seth Ferguson, Ed O'Leary, and Mark Elfman. So you ask what was in that bylaw at the time that you just revoked. It says basically, it says, I get it here somewhere, but it says, you have the ability to vote.
Which we didn't change.
You didn't change it. You voted again for the exact same thing and tonight you voted again for that.
So it was reconfirming it because it could.
So but basically, you're asking, does it give the ability? It gives you the ability to do it. Now, if you look at the um the positions, it says Foxborough Public Schools. Superintendent Spinelli was on there. She she's a resident. After that, no resident. Um Public Safety has not.
However, Jim, the 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 handbook itself stated that it, you didn't have to be a resident if it was by the department you were representing.
Yeah, it says all advise, this is what it says, residency. All advisory committees serve at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen will typically afford appointing preference to full-time town residents. However, the Board maintains the right to appoint non-residents to ad hoc or advisory committees as appropriate to the mission of the committee. Had you asked what the mission was and if he was a good fit and deemed that he wasn't a good fit, you vote him off. But you voted him off because he wasn't a resident and it flies in the face of your own bylaw. And 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 it flies in the face of the bylaw that you voted four minutes earlier. So there's no doubt in my mind, the intent was to be, you could, don't have to be a resident. And that's why we changed it from resident to member at large. And you don't have to take terms off. And that was codified by Gellerman all through the change, you know, so you can read it differently.
Well, no, but can I ask a question on that one?
Yep.
Because nobody asked the question about term limits, when town council was looking at that, they were not making a judgment as to the whether the wording was talking about term limits.
Correct. They weren't making a judgment.
So the wording says clearly, any member may be reappointed after one term has elapsed since the expiration of his or her most recent term.
Correct. So.
That does, I mean, that's the most, anybody is supposed to be able to read this and understand what that is saying.
I I couldn't agree with you more. So.
So there's a difference between what our town council is saying, what our town clerk is saying, what I interpreted when I read it, and what you're saying.
Okay. So when town council gets a bylaw, right, and all the bylaws go through the town council and they dot the i's and cross the t's and and put MGL in there. The town council does not have a right to change what the bylaw says or any of the the merits of it. He put in writing when he sent it back, these are the three changes. I didn't change anything of substance. And then he went on and said, you know, which was which was interesting, sorry for my basically, he said, um the changes are similar to those that would make at any proposed bylaw addition and do not reflect any concern with the substance of the article. So if he changed it, he didn't tell anybody if that was his intent. So I can read what you just read and said and and read it as, you finish a term, you can read at the at the end of the other, of the term.
Historically, what's happened with every Board of Selectmen, they've all read it so they can reappoint us. So why is it suddenly different now?
And and there's no other committee in town that I'm aware of that has term limits of that. In a time where it's so hard to get volunteers, if you say, thank you for three years, come back in three years, the committees are gonna fall apart. You cannot get volunteers for for many, many reasons. So and and you know, the adage, you know, say, thank you and can you come again, but you're saying, go away, and nobody's done it in town. I I can, you know, look at the people that have been on committees for ten plus years. And 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 going back to my original point, if you want to do that, you've taken a committee of seven and you've got two now. I think there's Doug Seuss, who was just appointed, and Christina, who's not a resident, but was appointed last week. So we have a committee of five and it's not functional.
So so let me, let me kind of tag on off what Bill said. So this wording, I, Jim, did you tell me that you came up with the wording and that?
No, no.
No, 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 no. Okay, I know, because we had a conversation. So this is how I take, from what you just said to me. This wording, somebody created this wording for you guys to bring to town council. You gave it to Gellerman.
No, no, just to correct you. What we came up with was, we came up with something called Foxborough Child Sexual Abuse Committee, December twenty fourth. Didn't have an article. We gave that in. They came back and they call it Article twenty-two with a motion. Everything's identical. They added a couple, the three things that he specifically said he added, and this was just not mentioned. And it says, any member may be reappointed after one term has elapsed since the expiration of the most recent term. Any member can be reappointed after one term has elapsed, so you do three, uh since the expiration of the most recent term. So that, I could read that as saying, after three years, it's expired. I can run again. It it doesn't say term limits. It doesn't say take a term off, you know, the henceforth and all that jargon that was in there.
So so first of all, a couple of things I just wanna a address. I'm not saying I didn't, I didn't vote. I'm not saying that I have not appointed. I don't look at this. We don't look at everybody's bylaws. You you know, the bylaws are there. The only reason why for for this board that came up is because Katie found the language and thought it sounded funny. She went to Bob Cutler. Bob gave her an opinion. She went to Pat Costello. He gave an opinion. That's why this is in front of us. We, so so when you say we looked at this every year, we don't look at this every year. We don't look at, I'm not looking at everybody's bylaw or everybody's um uh committee or board, how they're how they're made up. The 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 recommendations come here and then a decision is made. So I just want to clarify, so 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 that's why, this isn't, this wasn't missed every year.
All I'm saying is, no one ever interpreted it as term limits from the very beginning.
Well.
Every select board has reappointed people.
As has Bob Cutler.
If we need to go back to town meeting and correct the language, that's fine. But I beg of you, don't destroy what we're trying to do.
Well, so so here's, here's, if we were to listen to the clerk, listen to town council, what what you would, what we would ask you to do and urge you to do is to go back to town meeting and make make it, for me, this is just me. At the end of that, I would, there would have been just no term limits. Not this wording that that you have different people that are reading it and coming up with, you know, what what's different meanings. How about just no term limits? Like like, so what the position now we're in or that I'm gonna speak for myself, everyone can make their own, you know, when we vote. But when I have the clerk and I have our town council telling us that we shouldn't, that that this is how it's being read. And and nobody wants to dismantle this committee at all.
But wasn't he voted off before you asked town council their opinion?
No.
Was it?
I think it's two separate issues. It's two different issues here.
Two separate issues.
Yeah.
Let's let's stick with the term limits for us.
Yeah, yeah. This came afterwards. We, this was not in front of us for the last meeting. It's, listen, Leah, Doc will attest, Leah has been on on top of these boards and committees as long, speaking about them. We need to get them cleaned up. We have to make sure that, you know, that we're not missing, that we're appointing people, right? So that task has been put on Katie. So Katie has been hours and hours going over who who we supposed to have, who's, what what, you know, some of them are staggered. Well, some are sta, most of them are staggered, but, okay, so she's been spending hours and hours as she's, and she's looking at everybody's bylaws, how they're made up. As she read this, I shouldn't speak for you, Katie, but I mean, this is what Katie's told us.
No, simply, to to your point that you've been trying to make, though, simply in the past, Katie's position, not Katie, basically just gave list to the Board of Selectmen of these are the positions that need to be reappointed. They didn't go, quite honestly, if they were following the regulations, they would have said, well, no, that doesn't follow correctly for this group. That does, that follows correctly for that group, whatever. That was never done. So that, you know, you you can't put that on any of the select boards if it was brought to them, assuming that these things. I suppose we could, they all could have read the the bylaws and and on each committee and tried to figure it out. Um I personally, I don't see us dismantling the committee because that's not, we're not asking to do that. We're not pushing everybody else off. I I have a secondary problem, you know, and you know what my stand is already, but I have a secondary problem that the only member that's that member is also the chairman. So it's not even a town, you know, personally, that's a chairman of the committee. It's it's somebody who's not a a member. And I think Bob has done an amazing job and I truly believe that the committee has done an amazing job. I've obviously heard a lot of it through uh my role as well. So that's not the intent here. That has nothing to do with the intent here. You know, this wording has to be corrected because this is by far just the most confusing sentence that I've ever seen put in a document. And you can't find this in any of the other bylaws. You don't, you won't find that sentence in anything else on how positions are 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 put in. So that, no matter what we do here, that needs to come back to town meeting and that needs to be fixed.
Yeah, so other than Mr. Korea, all the others were reappointed last week. So we're not.
Mark Craig.
Huh?
Mark Craig has not yet, but but to.
Just to the point, they were, they were already, I think, going forward, I think cleaning up that language at special town meeting in four or five short months would be a wise thing to do, separate. So I think we're okay with the committee. We appointed them. We got two more potential appointments again tonight. As for Mr. Korea, I think history for me and the wording for me is an absolute reappointment. I mean, that that's just my opinion because it does go outside specifically the scope of allowing a member at large and and other members that were uh uh from other um other disciplines, using the wrong word, to be allowed to be on that committee. So I think, I think one part of our discussions really pretty much all sat, other than you guys going back as a committee and cleaning up the language and going, we have two more appointments going forward discussing those, correct?
Doc, but the problem is if we vote to not accept this language, we cannot make any appointments tonight. Just to make that clear.
Basically, town council has said that we can't appoint until that language is fixed.
Which which doesn't mean the committee can't stay, can't stay together and do what they're doing because you 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 just, you won't have voting members until town, till town meeting.
Makes a quorum a lot more difficult.
So Linda Welsh, appointed out committee member for ten years plus, so three terms, starting my fourth. Probably shouldn't have voted me in last week, right?
We probably shouldn't have. We caught this first, but we didn't.
Okay, so I myself would then just not be a member.
Well, you are. You were appointed last week.
I was appointed, but I don't have any voting privileges, but that's what she's saying.
She's saying you do. You're a full member.
Here's the other discussion that that we could have, could have is is if we've already appointed somebody, are we taking an appointment back? I mean, we've already, so I guess that's that's another discussion, you know, you know.
Yep, up to you.
That that we would have to have. I mean, I wouldn't vote for that. I mean, I feel like we 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 did it without knowing. I mean, that's just my opinion, but you know, but once it's, I kind of feel like once it's brought to our attention, we don't have a choice. Or or we can vote, vote whether whether we want to or not, but when, for me, when town council and the clerk says, this is how they read it and no, nobody wants to dismantle anything. We we all recognize.
You really, you can't dismantle it because it's in our bylaw. It is a bylaw. It's not just a.
Well, Linda, I'm using, I'm using the words that were said here to us.
I mean, if you kick everybody off.
That's why I'm using it back. That that's what nobody is is trying to do. I'm just using the same words that were given to me and and putting them back. That isn't the intent of this. And and you know what? Harmlessly, Katie was just doing her job. I mean, she's looking at everybody's.
Can I just chime in? Because I think Katie's getting a bad rap here. No, 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 but I want to say what happened is the, what was voted on last meeting was a policy. It was not the handbook. So the policy was discovered last meeting and that's the one that had the residency and that's what came up last time. Tonight, Katie brought up the handbook to make sure it's consistent with that newly adopted policy. So I just want to be clear. And then alternatively, someone else brought to the attention the term limit. Katie did not go looking for that, did not find that. That was something that was raised as a concern, so we start our research. I just want to say, like, Katie doesn't have time to research all these bylaws and do all this, so.
I spoke to, she called me this week. I have no issue with what she was doing.
She does an excellent job.
Yep.
Bang-up job down there.
Right. I mean, Katie's the one that was reading the bylaw that says, at the end of the day, the selectmen can can choose not to. The policy that you were voting on didn't say that. It just said, non-residents can't, you know, be on a committee. Your policy did, right?
And that's when. They were both, they were both there.
So the residents, what they voted on last meeting, it says residency. In general, all residents of the town of Foxborough, age eighteen and over shall be eligible for appointment to an appointed body. However, the select board maintains the right to appoint non-residents to ad hoc or advisory committees as appropriate to the mission of the committee.
That was added last week.
That was in it. That was already in there.
It was in the bylaw, but the policy, that's what you were looking at.
No, no, it was, it was there. You know something? It was never adopted. That's the handbook, correct, Katie? But looking, there were two, there were two different documents. There was a policy and there was a handbook.
That doesn't really even matter because all we did was confirm. So we didn't change it, so there's no.
But but he was voted off because he wasn't a resident is the point that I started with.
Yeah. Well, well, and and you know something? Okay, just in transparency, because Jim called me and and Amy sent sent an email, I have no, I have no problem. Well, first, I'm gonna tell you, town council, one of our council, has said, we don't have to give any reason why we appoint someone or why we don't, okay? Now, Jim, you've known me for a long time. I have no problem with being transparent, okay? And and I struggled, I went back and forth on on the vote, whether we should, you know, not keep it just to residents, if we should put that in there. And in, you know, and the conversation we had was, I asked Paige a question because you said you did all that talk about the economic development stuff, but you didn't have a conversation. So there were two things and I I was honest with you and I'll say it right here. I wasn't giving them a pass because it was the crafts. I asked, is that, you know, is that pertinent to somebody being representative of them, right? She said yes. Somewhere in there, I also said, is there a resident looking for that spot? And I was told no, because I wouldn't have voted to appoint Dan Krantz if there was a resident looking for that spot. So I, for me, I was sticking with the resident. Then when when we came here, right, the other ones were appointed, but you know, by Public Safety, by the schools, okay? So I did, I did, because Bob was not a resident, it was no offense to Bob, okay? I don't have anything against Bob. I barely know Bob. I know Bob from coming up in front of here. I don't know Bob outs outside of this table, okay? So for me, it was the, it was the resident piece. And and you asked me why I voted the other way when Dan was not a resident and I I specifically said.
Steph, that's not what I said. I said, there was a lot of discussion on the merits of having somebody resident, not the benefits of having somebody on a economic development that may not live in the town. There was no, my point was, there was no discussion of what the committee did or or his ability or what he's done for the last ten years. So that was the only discussion you had. You had said, are there three people for two positions? He's not a resident. We're gonna go with the other one. And I don't think you understood. You can't mix and match. The other one was Public Safety. The other one was Linda. Bob, because you didn't appoint him, whether he's a resident or not, that is still open. I don't think you understood that at the last actual meeting. There were three people for three positions. You voted two people.
No, Jim, I did, I did understand. I, I didn't, I didn't vote because he wasn't a resident. I, I, you know, and so, and, and why I vote, because you asked me, why did you have so much discussion for the other one? And I said, is there another resident looking for that position? And I was told no.
But you didn't ask it when it came to him.
That, that's my point. There was no other resident looking for this position, but yet you didn't appoint him because he wasn't a resident.
Well, I, I asked if we had open seats. Well, well, those were the only people that, that was a reappointment.
Yeah, three, three people, three seats.
Shame on me.
That's all I'm saying. You voted because he wasn't a resident.
Yeah.
But you voted you can be a resident on the bylaw, but when it came to him, the reason, and you're right, you don't have to say, but you did. You said it's because you're not a resident, but now there's no, no one in that position.
I don't mind being transparent. That, you know me, I don't, I don't have to, I didn't have to give any reason here. But if it gave some clarity, I don't mind, I don't mind saying why I voted. You know, so, I mean, I mean, what's before us right now, I guess we're, we're going to have to vote on, and like, like I said, I'm, you know, I guess, once we decide if we're gonna, going to clarify what we've been told by council this means, then I guess maybe we have to have a discussion about Linda's appointment. And then from there, you know, you, what I'm saying, is it valid or not valid?
Right, that's what I said, yep.
Exactly. And then, and then from there, I, tonight, we can't reappoint anybody else. Doesn't that start from you guys from meeting, getting together, you know, I'm, you know, nobody's, nobody's asking those people not to be a part of it. I mean, I guess if they're not appointed, they're not a voting member. So, I mean, that's how I'm seeing it. I mean, obviously, anybody else can, you know, can, can chime in, I, you know, I'm, I'm speaking for myself. Does somebody, somebody else, anybody else want to see if it's different? Doug, sure.
Come on up, Doug.
Linda's our clerk, so if she doesn't, if she can just show up, she just got to show up the table. Doug Seuss, 235 Central Street. She, she's like an officer, she's our clerk. So if, if she's appointed by mistake, but she can show up for meetings, then she really can't hold that position because she has no voting rights. So then we have to reorganize, we have to come up with a new chairperson, which, to my knowledge, none of us want that position. Bless you.
Thank you.
All right? She's been doing, I've been on the committee for two years now, she's been the clerk the whole time, Bob's been the chairperson, we are getting a lot of good things done. I mean, it's, this is not the time to try and, I'm not even going to say dismantled, to nitpick, it's something that doesn't need to be touched. It's working. It's working. We can go to town meeting, clean the thing up, but we should just leave things status quo, if at all possible. You got opinions from a couple of people that are lawyers, but the people that matter, our opinions matter. That's basically all I get to say.
And just for, I mean, she's already appointed, right? So you'd go back because now you know what you didn't know before? And, and that's still, that's a gray area. But whatever is for her, then Bill's in the same position because he's had been more than one term, the superintendent. So basically, I think you end up with two people on the committee.
Well, well, that was my, that was my point. I don't, I don't think we can go back now and take all the appointments away. This was just brought to our attention. And so, like I said, I gave you my opinion, of course, the rest of the board has to chime in on, on Linda's appointment. You know, that isn't the intent, and nobody is saying we're going to go back now and say, say, everybody else that was appointed. This was just brought in front of us. That's how I look at it. So we're not going to go backwards and start saying, anybody who served more than one term, we have, we have to take you off. So, I mean, that's my opinion. I mean, I think, I think we have to hit one, and then we, we, we go to, go to the next. I mean, if this, if this board votes to not listen to town council, then the rest of that is mute, right? Then we're going to move forward, her, her appointment is always, already there, and we're gonna, we're gonna look at, at the other appointments. So I, I think it's one step at a time, and then we, we move from there. Anybody else?
Well, I think we've got to go back to town council, and even though that was his opinion in this space of time when he saw this bylaw, we have to ask him, but this has been going on for 10 years. Can we continue this for six more months until, until we can get a bylaw change to clear it up? Do you follow what I'm saying? So, so we don't.
I think he already knows, though.
Well, I don't know. You don't know historically if, because you've been doing it for 10 years.
There's no, there's no harm in waiting another meeting and doing what Doug is saying.
Sure.
And, and see what Pat says, you know, relative, if he's, you know, if he, if he feels, you know, that basically the way of correcting it is to do the wording first, and then you can reappoint. We could throw in the thing with Linda. I personally would not change anybody who's been appointed already because they're already in a role, and they already have a, an expiration date based on their, the term that has been appointed. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't change any of that. I would just say that the two that are currently open need to wait until we get a little bit of clarification.
Two more weeks, because we did our due diligence two weeks ago, and we only found it out since then. So I agree with, you know, Phil, let's just wait two more weeks and get an opinion from town council.
Clarify for me, please, what is in two weeks?
Whether or not, whether or not we can appoint based on this language.
Who were the other two? Can you give me the names? Mark and Christina?
No, Mark and Bob.
Mark and Bob.
Mark and Bob. Let's just get an opinion. Right? We, I agree with you, but since town council has weighed in, now we got to ask them a little bit for more clarification. That's all.
That's the difference between one town council and another, so.
The town council that wrote this did not have that intent.
Right.
No, understandable, but the wording is still there where it can be, it could be potentially interpreted that way.
When you have your town council thing, you're gonna, you're gonna notice that everybody has a.
Let me make sure I have this clear. Town council did not write that whole bylaw for you.
Town council added the section on his own to, to, let me back up a little bit. Every time that there's a proposed bylaw, it goes to town council.
Yeah.
He, in writing, Dick Ellerman, who was the town council at the time, said, looks good, no changes. These are the three things. This I's dotted, this T's crossed, and this I's dotted. This was in there, and I think it was an intent to saying, at the end of three years, you can get appointed at the end of three years.
Well, but did somebody, did, I mean, we can go back and forth. Did someone, did Dick look at that, and did he assume that?
The fact, yeah, the fact that it wasn't in there before, and there was no discussion at advisory.
Well, that's why Dick changed that line.
To clarify it.
Okay, because that's not what you said. Everything you said he changed had nothing to do with that line.
Exactly. What he said was, these are the three things specifically that I changed, and it was for clarity. He never said, I think it's a good idea for term limits, you guys have never thought about this before, it's never been discussed, but as town council, I'm going to intervene and tell you to do that. That never happened.
We're still going to talk to Pat and find out.
Dick Ellerman.
So he put it in, but just, okay, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, he put it in because he was dotting the I's, and then he said in writing, it's, there's no substantive change, we do this for all of them. So I think that's why, why I went by town manager.
Well, I'm a little confused because everything you said Dick changed was not that line. And, and, and listen, this is, this is why maybe in my head, I, I thought of this, this committee as a little different. It's difficult, it's very difficult content. So, so when I read this, I'll tell you what I thought, because when I read it, and I said, oh, that sounds like they're supposed to step down. The first thing that went through my head, maybe it's a good thing to step down, maybe you shouldn't be involved in such diff, that's what I thought, because I, I thought it was funny that it would say for someone to step down. But that's the first thing that went through my head, so I didn't give it a second thought. And, but, but, I mean, I understand, you guys have been doing this over and over. I didn't know who wrote the language, but what you're saying is, Dick didn't change that language, that language was there.
He wrote that language.
He wrote that language.
That's why I asked him. I said, did Dick write this?
So, so I, I, I sent this to Katie, and she said she was going to distribute. I thought you read it before.
You do.
So you have it, okay.
Oh, I did, I did, but I.
So it says, attached is the revised motion of the committee. We have changed the motion to, one, adopted as an additional general bylaw, two, to provide for initial staggering terms, and three, to add saving clause at the end. Then he goes on to say that, that it doesn't, that it doesn't reflect any concern of substance of the article, the length of the initial terms are not magic, blah, blah, blah. Nobody gave him direction to change anything, and he gave it back and said he didn't change it. So, so that's, so that's, so I'll put my money on that council, you put yours on this, and then the one coming in next week is going to be something else.
That's fine, but I read that, Katie sent it to us, I didn't see that Dick changed this, so I assumed it was there when he got it. He wrote it to begin with.
He wrote it.
Okay, all right, that's, I think I said, did Dick write the whole thing? And I thought someone said, no. That's why I'm a little confused.
He didn't write the article, he wrote the changes.
Right.
And, but then he said the changes aren't of substance. I, I think we're on different.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, I'll saw it because.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah.
I, I think we've got to go back to Pat, have him give us an opinion. We'll put it on the agenda for next week.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
All right, but we're not changing anything we've already voted on.
Correct.
So you're still clerk.
Going back to Mark Craig.
Okay, but we're now down two members, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, for two more weeks. But you're, you're.
They will reappoint in two weeks.
But we're supposed to meet next week.
So, so still meet.
Yeah, it doesn't change anything.
It doesn't change anything, you could still meet.
Right.
Bob can go.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
All right, hold on, hold on. Ryanne, you want to speak?
Ryanne McGowan, 19 Rhodes Lane. Um, just like you're saying you're down two members, you invited me to come to your, and attend meetings, it's an open meeting, so just like you're inviting me to attend your next meeting, I'm not a member, but these people who are not appointed can still attend the meeting, so.
Sure, of course they could.
Just wanted to clarify, because now they're saying, oh, we're down two members, why are we going to meet? Voting members.
Well, voting members, right.
But they can still attend, like everyone else, so.
Love to have you come, love to have you come.
Just a little, I do feel like I was treated unfairly, um, a little bit by the committee.
So, we.
But this is, this isn't the form. You guys should have that discussion next week when you come to the meeting.
Yeah, you could, you could have it at the meeting, you know.
Love to have you come.
Just come and join us.
Yes.
You've got my cell number, right?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All ready to talk about my goals, aren't we?
Here we go.
Great time for goals. 10 o'clock at night.
Round and roll. Yes. It's the first draft. Because everybody read them?
Yep.
Yeah. All right.
So, yeah, so just to, to clarify, these are the goals. The format, just so you all know, the reason they're in this format is this is the GFOA book format, so that's why I followed that, because that's how they had been done in years past, so I did follow that. I guess I'll just kind of run through these for the folks at home, or unless you want to just gloss over them. I mean, I know it is late, so I don't know how you best want to tackle this, but I'm glad to kind of go over it. So my first goal has to do with communication. In my interview and throughout, I've been talking about that, which is to improve transparency and trust by increasing citizen engagement and opportunities for resident feedback. Under that, I had listed seven objectives. I won't read them all, but they, you know, they vary from the website to a communications plan, social media. One of the, the key things that we want to change is to get, implement the emergency notification program. The town doesn't presently have that, so if there's like a water line break, or for example, when Chris said that, that section of Walnut Street would be closed, we could put out a notice. We don't have that ability right now, so that's something we want to get underway right away. We want to also coordinate with the water and health departments because, as you heard earlier, we have a PFAS situation and the stormwater that's coming up. So I think, as, you know, they just mentioned tonight, that they want to bring something to town meeting, I think it's very important that, that we outreach and educate as to even why that's coming up. So then, and then also, we have a lot of major projects. Walnut Street, DPW Garage, Locker Room, Community Center, State Hospital, MBTA Communities, so we'll keep the residents informed of that. And then I went through, I won't list these all out, but basically, some various ways to measure that. And then timing, basically, go through it, we're going to be, we're, we're working very heavily on the website right now. The strategic communications plan, that's kind of not aggressive, but a little bit, Maura and I are going to have to work hard to meet that. She's working on a draft right now, hope to have it ready for your review in the fall. So that's the goal there. Second goal has to do with the finance, work with finance officials to protect and enhance the financial health of the town. As discussed at the financial summit, we're going to be looking at the financial policies to make sure that they're as strong as the town wants them and improve them as needed. Bill had a very good comment for me today, which talked about the fact that, you know, I'm still sort of honing my skills on budgeting and municipal finance, so I will continue to work towards that. Procurement, I've done some of the procurement class, I'll, I'll do more. So that's the plan there. Always, we're looking at grants. One thing, you know, as Lance was mentioning, grants for possible dam problems, of course, in the back of my mind, I'm going, oh, MBTA communities and grants. So stay tuned on that, because I don't know what the state's going to do, and if we don't pass MBTA communities, those grants might not be available to us, so I just wanted to mention that. So we'll be working on the policies this summer, and the, my financial education, obviously, will always be ongoing. Everything's pretty much ongoing. And then for the financial summit, we're going to be working with Maura to sort of try to get a better turnout, better viewership of that, so that folks really do understand the financial workings of municipal government. I know it's boring, but it is, it impacts us all. Then over to human resources and management and labor relations, this is a big one. We're looking at developing a compensation strategy, because we're getting ready to look at all sorts of contracts next, next year. That's number two. We have seven collective bargaining agreements to work on, it's going to be fun. Personnel policies, training, and then we want to make sure we're optimizing our human resources functions. So we're going to be meeting with unions, working with Paige in HR on the policies and training, holding regular department heads, et cetera. That will be ongoing throughout the year. That will be ongoing throughout the year. Goal number four, promote the economic vitality of the town through strategic land use and planning initiatives. Um, so again, that's fostering a supportive business environment, try to help our businesses grow, because that does offset tax, the tax burden on residential. Um, continue to work with the uptown businesses to continue, so they can prosper. Um, we'll be working on the master plan, the auditorium, the EDC. I wrote this goal, and then all of a sudden, the EDC scheduled a committee, so, a meeting, so I'm already checking that one off, but I actually didn't know that, so kind of joking there, but it was funny, it came through. Um, so have some measurements there, and again, that's all throughout the year. Our land use director is starting on Monday, so the master plan will be something she'll be looking at, and she'll be taking on a lot of this, but I obviously will be working closely with her on that. And then my fifth goal has to do with, um, something I had also mentioned in my interview, which was strategic planning. I didn't bite off too much on that, because as I've discussed, I, I, my time is quite stretched, um, every day. Um, but we do want to start talking about it and, um, come up with a purpose for a future strategic plan, figure out our scope, and figure out, you know, what we want to do and how we want to pay for that. So that's, uh, something that I think we should focus on over the next year, is to come up with a plan, for a plan. So, and that's it. I'm interested if anybody has any comments or feedback or anything you want to offer on these.
No, I think you've addressed the things that I questioned, and I appreciate that.
Yeah. So, what we could do, I mean, I don't know, I, I propose that I would submit these for the GFOA book, and then I also, in doing a lot of research for strategic planning and whatnot, I do think it's good for, to put these on the website, so that the residents and anybody who's looking can see transparently what the town manager is focusing on. Um, so, you know, once you all feel comfortable with these goals, I would make sure they're available for the public to see.
Did Dennis say anything to you? I'm sorry, he's not here.
He didn't, unfortunately. And I didn't know he was going to. So I'm glad to wait, if we want to, you know, give it some more time and have Dennis.
I think, I think it could be a quick vote next meeting, that we just basically, if anybody else comes up with anything in between, but, um.
Great. Yeah, I'd like to hear Dennis's input as well.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. And if anybody has any questions in the meantime, please let me know.
Okay, I'm right up, right into your update, Pige.
Okay, luckily, it's pretty short. So community center, um, Pat Costello did today, um, right back to the real estate, the people we're dealing with, and we are working through the, the transaction. Um, we are working on the septic issue right now, so that's trying to see what their, um, response is going to be to that, so I will keep you all informed on that, but we, we're continuing that. Um, recreation, I think everybody knows, and we talked about, she's given her notice, and tomorrow's her last day, um, but what I did want to announce is that Kristin Pellerin will be the acting, acting recreation director until a permanent director is hired. So we're going to keep Kristin on through the summer. Now's not the time, I don't think, to be hiring a recreation director in the middle of the summer, so Kristin's going to do a great job. She's, um, has experience doing this. She's had about seven years in various roles at the Randolph Rec Department. She's worked with Mark before, so he's quite comfortable with her abilities and skills, so we're very thankful to Kristin to stepping up and filling this gap for us, so, uh, because it is, you know, we're right at the corner of camp. Um, Olive and Mint.
What's happening with her role then?
Which, Renee's?
No.
Oh, Kristin's?
Yeah.
There's two existing staff members that are going to be picking up some of her responsibilities, sort of just a reallocation of resources, right, Mark? Yep. Okay. Um, Olive and Mint, um, all issues are reportedly resolved, waiting confirmation on that. So I, Frank Spillane is now working on the, the case, and we've been with Pat Costello and John Lovely, so we have another meeting scheduled next week to see if they're really ready to come in front of this board, just talk about it, because we don't want them to come unless they're really ready, so stay tuned on that.
They've been landscaping.
Hmm?
They've been landscaping.
Have they? Okay, good. Although that's the least of our worries. At least of a look. Um, again, the CSX train complaints, I only wanted to say publicly that we are still working with Jay Barrows and Senator Feeney on it. Um, you know, Jay Barrows is very involved in it, and he just said, you know, sometimes this takes a while. He is working with them, trying to get some answers and some resolutions. Um, Walnut Street groundbreaking is going to be on June 24th at noon. Um, Congressman Oakenclaw is coming to that, so we'll be doing that. In fact, um, we have a meeting, Lance, um, from, from DPW, and I will be meeting with Congressman Oakenclaw right after that, in order to talk about the Route 1 sewer feasibility study, so. Um, from HR perspective, we have two open positions, as always, our water tech, and then we're looking for a firefighter paramedic. Um, if this meeting ever ends, I'm going to go on vacation, uh, tonight, after this, and I will be back on the 12th. So just so you know, um, after tonight, I'm gone for a week, so I'm going to try to turn off my phone. Mark Craig's in charge. Thank you, Mark. Um, sorry. So, and then construction updates, we heard, um, Chris mentioned that, we just learned of this, that Walnut Street will be closed between North High and Route 140, and that's during construction hours. We're going to verify. Maura's going to put something out. I did email her when Chris said that. We need to just find out, because I think construction's hours are seven to three, maybe seven to four, but we'll have to verify the hours. And then Schneider did send us an update, that the Pond Avenue entrance and the alternate parking traffic plan remains in effect this week. Um, and then they don't know if it'll extend a little bit to next week, but definitely this week, they're still in the alternate form. And then just a reminder that the farmer, farmers markets are starting Thursday on the Common. That's it.
All right, super. Okay, um, select board update. Uh, okay, Katie, wanted us just to make everybody aware, appointments and reappointment letters have been given to the town clerk. As these are all considered new terms, please see the town clerk to be sworn in again, and the deadline to do that is June 15th. So if you already have received it, get up and see Bob, get yourself sworn in, and of course, um, we'll, we'll be giving a, a free pass to anybody who, who wasn't appointed yet, as far as the deadline, because they weren't appointed yet. So they'll be able to go see Bob afterwards. Um, okay, Deb, you had a couple of things that you wanted to bring up.
Yes. Um, mentioned Renee Tochi leaving from recreation. I'd like to offer her our best wishes and our congratulations. I worked with Renee for seven years. Um, they were great seven years. I watched her grow from a camp counselor into, uh, a recreation director, and it was an awesome venture. We, we were joined at the hips a lot. We had a lot of fun together. She did a tremendous job in Foxborough. She will do a tremendous job in Walpole, um, and I wish her well.
Second.
Exactly.
The other news was, on a sadder note, longtime board member Judy Norwood passed away. Um, Paul, you'll remember Judy. I don't know if there's.
You won't.
I don't know if there's many that do, besides my board members and Amy.
Jerry.
Yes. Decades she was on that recreation board, and she was a steadfast member, a steadfast volunteer. She helped start girls softball in this town, if I'm correct?
I did.
You did. She did it with you.
She helped. I don't think she coached.
Then you know what? She started it at the Booth Playground. That's where she started it. Thank you for starting it, though. But Judy.
Lisa Downs was one of the first to coach.
Who?
Lisa Downs.
Oh, okay. So Judy Norwood is very well respected.
Julie was, I think Julie might have been a sophomore coach at the high school.
You might, you might be right. I hope she was. We dedicated, dedicated a bench down at the Lane property to her several years ago. She was able to attend with her sons and daughters, and she.
From her house.
She, right? She was, uh, very appreciative of it, so we're sorry to see her go and grateful for her accomplishments.
And one quick thing about the Norwoods, uh, believe it or not, you talked about softball. Over in Stoughton, we knew about the Norwoods, I believe, um, I, I.
Norwood.
They were, they were twin daughters, and, and, and we'd come over here, and we'd be like, uh-oh. We couldn't tell who was who and playing against them, and so we even knew about the Norwoods over in Stoughton, way, way back in the day. 1983, long time ago, so Mrs. Norwood was very, very nice woman. Was a nice woman.
What softball started these?
Oh, okay. Oh, before that. Do you have anything for something, Doc, anything to say?
Yeah, just a quick question, uh, through the, for you. Um, I saw on the draft that we were going to talk about the art plant today, and then it was taken off on the, um, operations, uh, no, it was on the draft, but it was taken off the final agenda.
Ooh, I didn't think it was ever on the track, was it?
It was on, it was on the draft originally.
I mean, it was in board docs as, as a placeholder.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. Um, and, and we, we, just like when, um, uh, we weren't going to have a full discussion afterwards, because then you weren't here.
Yeah.
Um, we weren't expecting Dennis tonight.
Oh, 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 oh.
And then he was able to, so, so when we actually met to set the agenda, we, we, we didn't even, um, I, I did, I, I'll be honest with you, I didn't even look. I didn't even look, because we went and set the agenda, we never discussed it, because I knew, I was thinking we were going to be short another member.
It wasn't on that agenda that we reviewed that day.
Well, it must have been on a draft as a placeholder, like you said, that I saw.
Maybe, maybe. Okay. Yep. Nope.
All right, so potentially next meeting if, uh.
Yeah, once we, once we have every, once we have everybody, yeah, whichever meeting we have, like, I thought it was, it should be a discussion with all board members.
Oh, absolutely. There's no doubt.
Absolutely. Okay, um, okay, so, oh, nothing, Bill, you have nothing? Okay. All right, so next on our agenda is to talk about Tom Brady. So, um, we all know that on the 12th will be Tom Brady Night, um, up at the stadium. They're going to be honoring him, uh, you know, put, uh, putting him into the Patriots Hall of Fame. So there was some discussion. Uh, Paige and I kind of were thinking the same way, that it might be nice if we did a proclamation, maybe not through the State House, they're doing, they're, I think, Senator Feeney, they're doing their own, but maybe we could type up something. Is this it? All right.
Yes.
So should, should we, should I go ahead and read it, and then we'll vote on it? Is that, okay. So, and basically, we do, we just want to make the 12th Tom Brady Day in Foxborough. So, um, okay, Town of Foxborough proclamation. Whereas Tom Brady, as quarterback of the New England Patriots, has demonstrated unapparelled skill, dedication, and leadership on and off the football field. Whereas Tom Brady led the New England Patriots to multiple Super Bowl championships, bringing pride and joy to the Foxborough community in the greater New England region. Whereas Tom Brady, Tom Brady's commitment to excellence and his sportsmanship have made a lasting impact on the sport of football and have inspired countless fans and aspiring athletes. Whereas Tom Brady's achievements and legacy have significantly contributed to the reputation and success of the New England Patriots, cementing his status as a football icon. Whereas June 12th, 2024 marks a fitting date to celebrate and honor Tom Brady's illustrious career and enduring connection to Foxborough and the region. Therefore, be it resolved that the Foxborough Select Board hereby dedicates June 12th, 2024 as Tom Brady Day in Foxborough. Therefore, be it resolved that the Foxborough Select Board encourages our residents, businesses, and organizations within the community to recognize and celebrate Tom Brady's contributions on this day. Therefore, be it resolved that a copy of this motion be presented to Tom Brady as a token of appreciation for his remarkable career and his positive influence on the community. Tom Brady Day. This proclamation given under the seal of the Town of Foxborough on this day, 4th of June 2024. And then it would be signed by the entire board. So I'd like to make a motion that we make the 12th Tom Brady Day and present this proclamation.
Second.
Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Maybe Tom will come back and thank us somewhere, somewhere down the line. He's always welcome here, correct? Okay, awesome. All right. That'll be a nice tribute from the town for him. Okay. Deb, action items. Oh, oh, we should have, we didn't need you to unless, unless, um, you guys get, you guys, because it's, it's recurring? No, I, I wish we knew. We just thought you wanted to hang with us.
I think.
Make a motion to approve the use of public way application for the annual J.C.'s Cash Show on September 1st, 2024, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the use of public way application for the Rodman Ride for Kids on September 21st, 2024, from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One-day beer and wine application for the Rodman Ride for Kids on September 21st, 2024, for a service from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at 38 Napont Street.
Second.
Any discussion?
She has to read the motion.
Sorry?
That was just the agenda item. You just have to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to approve the one-day beer and wine applications for the Rodman Ride for Kids on September 21st, 2024, for service from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at 38 Napont Street.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept the enrollment fees for the Junior Police Academy in the amounts of $150.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept the enrollment fees for the Junior Police Academy in the amounts of $150.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the enrollment fees for the Junior Police Academy in the amount of $450.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, why do we do have to do these as individuals? Why isn't it not just done as a lump sum?
It's how they deliberate to me.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to approve additional.
Women, women. What happened? All those in favor?
Oh.
Oh, me. Okay.
Motion to approve additional data sheets for the New England Patriots 2024-2025 football season, under the 2024 annual entertainment license.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the use of public way application for the, did we already do that one?
Yeah.
Yep.
Eleven forty.
Eleven eight. Extended hours.
Motion to approve the extended hours request for the Scorpion Bar in Mexican Cantina at 253 Patriot Place, Renaissance Patriot Place at 28 Patriots Place, and Red Robin at 201 Patriots Place, Axel and Byrne at 267 Patriots Place, Citizen Crust at 229 Patriots Place, and Splitsville at 220 Patriots Place, to serve alcohol accompanied by food on September 15th, October 6th, 13th, and 27th, November 17th, and December 1st, as the Patriots will play at home with a 1:00 p.m. estimated kickoff.
Second.
Um, under discussion, Katie, did, um, did the usual people reach out? I don't see Archelito's.
Um, I do have a second round coming, um, for duty.
Okay, okay, all right, just, just want, wanted to make sure we're not going to get them dribs and drabs one at a time. All right, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve three Wormtown one-day beer and wine licenses for the Patriot Place Pickleball Classic, one Patriot Place for June 21st, 22nd, and 23rd.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve minutes from the May 21st, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody.